Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. Welcome to our study session. And this afternoon, we’ll be focused on building a shared understanding of equity work in the context of city government. Welcome, everybody. I want to make sure we’re respectful of everyone’s time and that we’re able to get going here. Welcome to our study session on Building a Shared Understanding of Equity Work in the Context of City Government. This will be the first of two study sessions and undoubtedly many other public convenings. And I really want to express my appreciation to those who are with us to help us learn and to guide us a bit. Dr. Stephen Petty, Julie Nelson from GARE, and Leon Andrews from National League of Cities, who are very grateful for your willingness to invest this time with us and with our community. And Dave, take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate everyone being here today on a Friday afternoon. Very much appreciate the mayor and the council for this opportunity and space for this discussion. I want to give special thanks to Angel, and Lee, and Zulma, and Stephanie for all their work to kind of pull this together. I want to thank our GARE teams here in the city for their commitment and hard work and certainly want to thank all of the community. And just want to acknowledge, you know, this work in equity goes on all the time and this is part of a process to continue to strive toward an equitable San Jose. Just for a little context, and I know the council already knows this, but some in the audience and some watching may not, you know, for me, this first became an issue when I started as a city manager. I did a lot of listening to the workforce and to our community. And I can tell you, some were super excited about the city’s future and some were concerned about the city’s future. And to my surprise, actually, I’ll be honest with you, equity and race came up a lot in those sessions when I was listening. And so, when staff came to me early on, when I became city manager, and requested that we engage in kind of a year of learning with the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, GARE, I knew that it was the right thing for the organization and certainly for us in terms of a learning opportunity. And so, we began our engagement with GARE in 2018, and it’s continued for the past two years. Over these last two years, we’ve intentionally focused on our capacity building within the organization, increasing the infrastructure, collecting data, and providing training to staff, and supporting the departments that are involved with GARE to create kind of a more normalized conversation around how we approach this work. Then last year, in the budget process, we were first asked to apply an equity screen to some of our programs, which we did. And we were also directed through that process to schedule a study session with the full council and city leadership, focused on identifying and implementing solutions to address inequities in our community. In September, through our rules process, additional direction was given to us in terms of kind of the content of the study sessions. I’ve continued to do a lot of listening, and I will tell you that I know for some, we’re moving too fast here, and for others, we’re moving too slow. Just want to acknowledge that. As we continue our efforts to build a more equitable San Jose, I think we’re all committed to listening and learning, asking questions as to why things are the way they are, and finding solutions to make things better for all members of our community. And I can tell you, we don’t have all the answers, but I personally am committed to working with our staff and the mayor and the council to kind of drive toward a shared understanding of what equity means for San Jose and how we go about doing this work in San Jose. And so, I think it’s important that we start by engaging in these crucial conversations in a productive way. And to that end, thank you for all being here at our first study session on equity. So, let me get right into it. The purpose of the study session today is to build a shared understanding of what equity means in the context of local government, why it’s important, and how to embed a framework that reduces inequities. We hope that you walk away with a shared understanding that will allow us to lay the groundwork for a thoughtful, intentional, multi-year process for system change that really improves outcomes for everyone in our community. And so, that’s what the objectives are today, and we’ve invited some experts here to help us with that. Our first guest is Stephen Petty, a professor of History, American Studies, and Ethnicity, Race, and Migration at Yale University. Following Professor Petty, you’ll hear from Julie Nelson, Senior Vice President of Race Forward and co-chair, co-director of the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, GARE; and then Leon Andrews, Director of Race, Equity, and Leadership from the League of National Cities. So, thank you for being here, and we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Sykes, and Mayor Liccardo, and everyone here. I’m here to talk about San Jose’s history briefly and to say a few words about past equity struggles and try to provide the context that a historian can provide for the critical conversations that I think everyone here is committed to having in 2019 and beyond. I want to make a pitch for the importance of San Jose’s history and for the importance of history generally, for any considerations of public policy, for community building, and all the great work that those in city government are undertaking now and in the future. I think we still know too little about San Jose’s history, and some of the reason we know so little about San Jose’s history is because I think it’s somewhat baked into the culture of this area to continue moving forward, to think about the next thing, to rush forward into the future. But I think the past in this area is important and that we don’t do ourselves and our communities a service if we only look to the entrepreneurs, the forward thinkers, the visionaries, and avoid thinking about the everyday people and those whose lives have been shaped by a lack of equity or even the presence of discrimination over time. I would suggest, based on my historical research, that issues of race have been actually central to San Jose’s identity and to the social and political dynamics that have shaped life in this valley over the last 200 years. And that it’s important to know San Jose’s history if we want to think about issues of equity and our next steps. History, I think, is both the foundation and the framework in which we live today, and it provides the ways in which we can see what’s going on around us and imagine better futures for everybody. In my reading, San Jose’s government, San Jose’s civic leaders didn’t really move forward energetically on equity issues in any substantive way until the 1970s and the 1980s, which on the one hand gives us some history of doing so, but on the other, I think is important to say that San Jose was later in getting to these issues than many other cities around the country. There are, of course, multiple histories that need to be thought about when we think about this area. And to my mind, dominant versions of history of what the San Jose is can sometimes obscure other critical histories that are equally important for the shaping of this area. Sometimes we talk about, for example, the Spaniards who brought civilization to this region, that’s a version of history. The valley as an idyllic land for family farmers in the 19th century, that’s a version of history. The immigrants who supposedly assimilated seamlessly into regional society 100 years ago, another version of history. The ways in which middle-class families made this place a land of opportunity in the 1940s and the 1950s. The sense that the tech revolution based here was a product of individual genius, that’s a version of history. Or that San Jose has become an ever-more liberal, ever-more welcoming place for everybody over the last 50 years. I think that historical evidence would suggest that we need to complicate all of those narratives and think more deeply about all of those as we think about how to actually understand this place. So, let me start by saying that I think it’s critical, for one thing, to remember the valley’s history in the mid and late 19th century, as this place became part of the United States in the aftermath of the Mexican War, that as an American town, this place was profoundly shaped by gold rush dynamics, by manifest destiny, and by a drive to develop farming industries that would privilege white Americans and not Native peoples and not people of Mexican descent. In fact, that foundational era of valley history was structured by the displacement and disenfranchisement of previous landowners, particularly Mexicans and Mexican-Americans, who were defrauded and denied their rights in post-1848 California. Economic growth in the early years of San Jose’s existence as part of the United States was pursued in the name of anti-native, anti-Mexican racism, and also of anti-Catholic sentiments. So, if we’re going to talk about the history of San Jose from these moments forward, we have to acknowledge, I think, that white supremacy was a key factor during that period and might at least possibly have continued to be important into the 20th century. The city’s founding framers, the city and county officials in that period, its farmers, its other elites, its regional brewsters, were not innocents in this period. Powerful people sent San Jose residents of color and immigrants and others to jail on anti-vagrancy charges, turned them into indentured workers before and after the American Civil War. White people commonly called themselves farmers to distinguish themselves from peons in this area. Farmer was a racial code word in the 19th century that was intended to distinguish people from indolent, lazy, racial others, and to define Latinos and others in this area as people who were suited for menial labor but not entitled to full citizenship. If we’re going to think about San Jose’s history and the history of equity, we should also remember that San Joseans developed systems of racial violence in the 19th century that targeted Mexicans and others in the valley. Lynchings were not uncommon in this place 150 years ago. Mexicans were criminalized and labeled monsters or labeled tigers in the 19th century in ways that sounds a little bit like the super predator language, so-called, of the 1990s. This was foundational to this area. This region created legal double standards that sent, through the justice system, that sent Mexicans to their deaths in court trials on murder charges, but sent very similar white defendants to jail on short prison terms who faced merely manslaughter charges. This area saw the development and maintenance of a justice system in the 19th century that had no Mexicans on its grand juries until after 1900, that had no Mexicans serving as sheriffs or justices of the peace or police officers during that era, and that actually trumpeted the disfranchisement and the dislocation of those people. I like to tell the story of Antonio Chaboya, early and mid-19th century resident of the San Jose era, who was a landowner in advance of the Mexican War, whose land was squatted on by incoming white settlers in the 1840s and the 1850s. Antonio Chaboya went to court in the 1850s to try to prove that that land was his and that these squatters did not actually belong on his land. In 1861, Antonio Chaboya won his court case. The court agreed that the land was, in fact, property of the Chaboya family, and the sheriff was charged with removing those squatters from Chaboya’s land. But not a single county resident in San Jose would join the sheriff in enforcing the court order. And in fact, a crowd of 2,000 people gathered in San Jose with a brass band, fully armed with guns, a cannon, women and children carrying guns, to insist that, in fact, Chaboya would not reclaim his land, that what was at stake was San Jose, the San Jose area, as a home for white Americans. During this period of the late 19th century and Chaboya’s lifetime and thereafter, Mexicans and Mexican-Americans in this region were pushed into low-wage jobs and had little property of their own, thanks to the activities of everyday citizens and of government officials. Many became agricultural, low-wage agricultural workers, others became industrial workers at the New Almeden Mine, just 15 miles roughly south from here, facing racism and segregation in housing and in employment, facing a different kind of violence distinct from lynching, but the kind of violence that people face in dangerous work situations, mining, for example. People ran the risk of explosions, maiming, and so forth. This period of the late 19th century also sees the systematic development of wage differentials of what we might think of as a dual wage system that defined white workers as being worth a certain amount of money on an hourly or daily basis, and Mexicans being worth roughly half of what white workers were earning in the valley for very similar work. So, all this in the 19th century set the stage for 20th century developments and 20th century structures for racial disparities that would include a dual wage structure for white and non-white workers in the early 20th century valley, that would include a lack of property held by Latinos and other people of color. Property was largely, almost exclusively, in the hands of white San Joseans in the 20th century. That would include the physical removal and segregation of Latinos from white residents in the early 20th century. And all of this set the stage for the arrival of larger numbers of Mexicans to this place during the 1910s and the 1920s. These were immigrants in the period of the Mexican Revolution, when tens of thousands came to this area as seasonal workers to labor in local orchards and other fields in what was then called the Valley of Hearts Delight, as I’m sure you know. Mexicans in this period of the 1910s, the 20s, and the 30s were the critical low-wage workforce that helped to shape the valley economy, working especially in the fields. They were distinguished in this period by most observers as distinctly non-white. Portuguese workers, Italian workers, and others were eventually considered to be white, Europeans, actually quite quickly. Mexicans in this period were more commonly lumped together with the Chinese or with African-Americans as something other than white. During this period, the city government, the county government, didn’t do much to urge Mexicans towards positions of greater stability or greater equity in this region. And in part for that reason, there was essentially no middle class developing for Mexican-Americans in the first half of the 20th century. Very, very few professionals, almost no Mexican-Americans employed by the city government until well into the 20th century. For example, I think the first Mexican-American city employee in San Jose was a man named Manuel Castillo, who was hired to be a police officer in the mid-1920s. No Mexican-American city employee before that that I’m aware of. These Mexicans and Mexican-Americans in the first decades of the 20th century were welcomed but only as seasonal workers who would be kept out of urban permanent jobs, which is to say they were not working, they were not allowed on the whole to work in construction jobs or other urban trade jobs. Local labor unions played an important role in keeping Mexicans and Mexican-Americans out of permanent residency in San Jose in this period. This is the American Federation of Labor principally, who would say things like, “We don’t want San Jose to turn into another Los Angeles, another place where there’s too many Mexicans,” as it was thought in the 1920s and 1930s by many. Mexicans were described as criminals, and the city of San Jose passed a resolution that assured that all local city jobs would only go to U.S. citizens, which was a code for keeping Mexicans out of permanent city jobs. So, partly for these reasons, Mexicans and Mexican-Americans had a very difficult time establishing permanent residency in this place for much of the first half of the 20th century. Those who did try to establish permanent residency here were often run out of neighborhoods by neighbors, by real estate developers and others, who complained that Mexicans were ruining neighborhoods in what we now think of as the Silicon Valley. For example, a justice of the peace in Sunnyvale complained that Mexican immigrants, quote, “form colonies, and when they do, the white people move out.” Another said, “Nothing will so effectively kill the real estate market in San Jose as the arrival of Mexicans.” For these reasons, developers and homeowners established restrictive racial covenants in the 1920s that became incredibly common from 1920 into the mid and late 1940s. Those restrictive racial covenants, which declared that people could not sell or rent property to non-whites, helped to make places like Palo Alto and other suburban communities adjacent to San Jose more like white enclaves than diverse ones. In the late 1940s, a local study found that, quote, “All the subdivisions of San Jose opened within the last five or six years have written restrictions barring property from occupancy or use by all non-Caucasians except those working as domestics in the area.” What this meant is that Mexicans, instead of living in the neighborhoods that many of us think of as the more middle-class or affluent neighborhoods of this area, of this region, instead found themselves living in places like East San Jose, a rural barrio that was very connected to the region’s agricultural industry. Neighborhoods that were unpaved, neighborhoods that were muddy in the rainstorms and dusty in the hot summer months, much like Central Valley towns, poor Central Valley farmworker towns, neighborhoods on the east side that had no sewage, minimal fire service, and were at once hyperpoliced and underpoliced. These neighborhoods, of course, had places like Piojo, Lice, and Salsipuentes. In these places, Mexican-Americans in the 1920s and 30s became more American in certain ways, but often with little support from local officials or local institutions. Labor unions did very little to assist these residents, local officials did little, homeownership became quite difficult for reasons that I’ve explained in the 30s and the 40s. Rates of deportation and repatriation were high in this period, and there was a very limited middle class in development in these years of the 30s and 40s and 50s. As World War II changed this city and this region, as the government signed military contracts with local employers, Mexicans and Mexican-Americans tended to find themselves still inheriting the traditions of the 19th century in low-wage occupations that were marginal to the gains of the urban economy. As manufacturing developed, Mexicans were often kept out of the jobs at places like Kaiser or even the U.S. Navy. Unions continued not to help. There were no Mexican-Americans who were members of unions like the retail clerks or the painters or the culinary workers or the carpenters or many other AFL locals during the 1940s. The county did not hire Mexicans. In 1947, there were roughly 1,000 county employees, of whom only nine were Mexican-American. So, instead, Mexican-Americans continued to crowd into the east side and continued to move into the lowest wage occupations in this area, facing criminalization as a non-white population as they had in the 19th century. When the tech industry took off in the 1950s and the 1960s, many ethnic Mexicans were still working in the fields and living in East San Jose. Those who arrived to work in tech commonly celebrated, trumpeted their excitement that they could work in this exciting new industry in the proximity of agriculture. Agriculture that they rarely recognized was being driven by Mexicans and Mexican-Americans as low-wage workers. The result was that by 1950, San Jose had one of the lowest percentages of non-whites of any California city. Most Mexican-Americans in this period lived in the county but not in the city proper. Mexicans were not moving into construction jobs until the 1950s and the 1960s, and it was only in this period of the post-war period, really the 60s and 70s, that a small middle class began to emerge among Mexican-Americans. And the middle class here, I hasten to say, among Mexican-Americans was smaller than the middle class in Mexican-American middle class in places like Los Angeles, where people had more opportunities. Most of these middle-class members in the 1960s and even in the 1970s prospered because they were serving other Spanish speakers. They were owning the grocery store in the neighborhood, or they owned the theater that showed Spanish-language movies or the like. But this was a small group. In 1964, in the city of San Jose, there were only five Mexican-American lawyers, there were only 20 Mexican-American teachers, there were only six Mexican-American social workers. The story from the 50s and 60s forward then is one of Mexican-Americans being held back and arriving quite late to middle-class status to equity in a way that I think we would like to understand equity today. But it’s also one in which Mexican-Americans and others worked to advance representation and worked to advance equity over the last 50 years. There were efforts by the 1950s and 1960s to achieve political representation for Mexican-Americans in city government and county government. These efforts never really succeeded until the 1970s, at a time at which during the late 19th century, more and more immigrants were arriving in this era, and Latinos still faced high unemployment. In the 1970s and in the 1980s, the unemployment rate among Latinos in San Jose was twice as high as it was for white residents of San Jose. The per capita income for Latinos in San Jose was roughly half what the per capita income was for white San Joseans. High dropout rates in local schools dogged Latinos in this area. And increasingly, Mexicans and Mexican-Americans and other Latinos who benefited from the Silicon Valley economy did so by occupying the lowest ranks, the lowest rungs of the ladder of that economy, which is to say they moved into assembly jobs that were linked to jobs at IBM and elsewhere. By the late 1980s, there were 50,000 local assembly workers working in those low-wage jobs, and most of them were women of color in this place. This period of the 1970s, 80s, and 90s, as Silicon Valley takes off, also sees the rise of subcontracting, which includes many Mexicans and Mexican-Americans in janitorial roles as construction workers, as landscape workers, the rise of service professions, restaurants, car washes, and the like. We might think of this as being a benefit of the Silicon Valley economy, but again, people are experiencing the rise of Silicon Valley’s economy not as grand beneficiaries of this economy, but rather as service workers or something like that. In 1982, the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights released a report that revealed that San Jose, quote, “is sharply divided along ethnic, sexual, and educational lines. In general, white males hold the positions with the highest incomes and the greatest power.” And I want to suggest to the council and to others that we’ve moved a long way, on the one hand, since the 1980s, but as we think about equity, I think we have to keep in mind the structures of life in this place, the patterns of residency, the patterns of work, which defined San Jose from the 1840s all the way into the late 20th century and which I think continue to be fundamentally important for the creation and the way that people live in San Jose in 2019 and 2020. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Thank you. I wanted to ask all the members of the community if you could please fill out a card, because what we’d like to do after we’ve had the presentation is then hear from the public. I think this is really, for us, more than anything, listening opportunity on the council. So, please, if you’d like to speak, we’ll be hearing from the public before we come back to the council. Wonderful. Next, I believe, Dave?
Actually, Leon and I are going to trade off a little bit, and Leon’s going to start.
Okay, thank you, Leon.
So, good evening. Glad to be with you here in the city of San Jose. Leon Andrews with the National League of Cities, Director for REAL. We are glad to come and share with you essentially the work that we’ve been doing in cities across the country on racial equity, and glad to be partnering with the Government Alliance for Race and Equity. We want to start by just giving a little bit of background of our work, both the National League of Cities REAL, as well as the Government Alliance for Race and Equity. REAL was created four years ago, four and a half years ago, by our CEO Clarence Anthony and our president at the time, Mayor Chris Coleman, from St. Paul, Minnesota, in the backdrop of Ferguson. Ferguson was a member of, is a member of, the National League of Cities. They reached out to us five years ago when all of us were seeing what was happening on the streets of Ferguson with the tanks and a lot of the racial tension. We at the National League of Cities were not ready to respond to Ferguson five years ago. And so, in the last five years, we’ve obviously seen racial tensions that have erupted, not just in Ferguson, but city after city, whether we’re talking about Baltimore, Charleston, North Charleston, et cetera. And so, our work is really trying to figure out how do we work with city leaders to strengthen your to strengthen your knowledge and capacity to eliminate racial tensions, to eliminate racial disparities, heal racial tensions, and build more equitable communities? And I’m going to have Julie do a quick introduction of Race Forward.
Yeah, Race Forward is a national racial equity organization, working across the country, not only with government, through the Government Alliance on Race inequity, but supporting policy change, supporting grassroots community organizing, and also working to change the narratives, the stories that get told about race and racial equity. Have a vision that we can actually get to racial equity.
All right, so our time together is to really try to accomplish these, to talk about our purpose and our outcomes. So our purpose here is to build a shared understanding of what equity work means in the context of local government, why it’s important, and how to embed a framework that reduces inequities. Our hope is, at the time that we have with you, is that there, that there is a better shared understanding that will allow us to lay the groundwork for something that’s more thoughtful, intentional, multi-yeared, as you think about the work that you’re doing here from a systems-change level in San Jose, with, with the ultimate goal of improving outcomes for everyone here in the city of San Jose. When REAL was created, we were, essentially, our work, we want to give you a sense of the work that we do. We provide training and, and technical assistance to cities. We have created cohorts for cities to come together and learn with one another. We have a number of initiatives where we’re able to do that and provide more intensive training. Also want to acknowledge that while we’re here today, I don’t want to really acknowledge this as, it’s like a mini-training. I think the work that we do, we recognize that this is two hours or so with you, but, you know, to do this training, there’s obviously not just a one, one-on-one, and all of a sudden you walk away as racial equity experts, but our, our hope here is that we’re laying a foundation for understanding the why, why change is needed, maybe give you a sense of what are some proposed solutions that you, as city council, could be thinking about doing? How do you begin using, you know, using the platform you have to be more intentional? And have some sense of urgency. Maybe there’s a walk, a sense of, well, we don’t want to wait, we shouldn’t wait another month, year, five years, but we need to be very intentional in that space. So our work is very much creating the space where we do that through our trainings, technical assistance, and network building. Oh, and, and then this gives, gives a sense of kind of where we show up across the country. So in the last five, four and a half years, REAL has provided training, technical assistance, a network, opportunities for city leaders to connect from across the country. We’re in over 1,200 cities, towns, and villages. So want to give you a sense of, obviously, our breadth, as well as our depth, as you can see in California, but literally across the country. And I’ll have Julie talk about GARE, but before I do that, I also want to be able to acknowledge that while we do this work, we don’t approach this, while it’s important to talk about the moral piece of this, that this, there is a moral issue to why government should care about racial equity. I also, we really emphasize from a government perspective, dealing with racial equity is good governance. It allows you to be more intentional about creating more prosperous, more prosperous city, safer, healthier, more accountable government. And so it’s really important to really understand that it’s not just the right thing to do or the moral thing to do, and that there, obviously, there’s a need to talk about this, but there’s really important to really understand, it just allows government to be much more effective and much more impactful. And so that, for us, just in terms of making a case for racial equity, is really important as we talk about what that looks like from a local government perspective.
Thanks, Leon, and thanks, Professor Pettis. I really appreciated the grounding in history. I think for us to make progress in working on racial equity, we’re not going to be able to do it unless we acknowledge and are accountable for our history. So really appreciated starting our session today with that. I want to thank council members for having us here today. I also want to thank the city staff who are in the office, in the audience, many of whom who have participated in the Government Alliance on Race inequity cohort. And I also want to thank community members, that for us to actually get to an effective, inclusive government, for us to think about a public sector that really is about the public good, we need community members, we need government staff, and we need elected officials working on it. So want to thank you all for being here. I also, before I talk about GARE, I also wanted to do a tiny introduction of myself, just because sometimes it’s like, who made this person an expert? And there’s a couple of ways in which I would like to share the background that I bring to this conversation. I am with Race Forward, Senior Vice President of Programs and Director of the Government Alliance on Race inequity. And I came into those positions about six years ago after having spent the bulk of my career working in local government, and worked for the city of Seattle for 23 years across multiple departments. I worked in the budget office, I worked in the utilities, the housing department, human services, fleets and facilities, worked across a broad swath of government. And the last 10 years, I was the Director of the Office for Civil Rights. And as the Director of the Office for Civil Rights, the primary responsibility when I moved into the job was the enforcement of anti-discrimination laws. And we did that, and we did it really well. We were an amazing enforcement organization. And the truth is, is that regardless of how well we enforced anti-discrimination law, Seattle was a city that had deep and pervasive racial inequities across every single indicator for success. And Seattle was a city that prides itself on being, you know, good, good government, progressive people. We do a lot of things, like, you know, tax ourselves and had protected classes and a lot of stuff that we could take pride in, but the truth was deep and pervasive racial inequities. And so as the Director of the Office for Civil Rights, had the fortune to have a mayor, and elected officials, and community members, all of whom said enforcement is not enough. We need to really do some root cause analysis and work on ending institutional and structural racism. So my passion for the public sector is because the public sector can make a difference, that local government touches on every single indicator for success, whether we’re talking about health inequities, or housing, or education, criminal justice, you name it, government touches on it. So the question is not whether or not we’re going to do something, the question is whether we’re going to perpetuate status quo, or whether we’re going to proactively advance racial justice. So for me, I do have a strong commitment to making the public sector the best that it can be. That means that we need to work on racial justice. So that’s one thing about me, public sector, deep commitment, deep passion for the public sector. I also want to name that I’m a white woman working on racial justice. I did not grow up in a household as a young person where I had white parents who taught me about race. In fact, many of the messages that I got as a young person weren’t that helpful, that I was taught that equality is important, and to be fair, and to be good to people. But I was also taught that somehow it was rude to talk about race. So for me, as a young person trying to make sense of the world, where, yeah, fairness matters, but we’re not supposed to talk about things where there are deep pervasive inequities, it just didn’t make sense to me. So for me, as someone who had a lot of commitment to creating a more fair and just world, the way in which I became active around race actually was because of my involvement in the Anti-Violence Against Women movement, that as a survivor, I ended up going to get services after having been sexually assaulted. Those services were absolutely essential for my well-being. Afterwards, I wanted to give back. I wanted to prevent violence against women. I went to volunteer at an organization that to be on the crisis line helping other women, you went through 80 hours of training. Of those 80 hours, two days were on the topic of race. The experience that I had at that moment in my life was that I was with a group of people who shared my demographic. There was a whole bunch of young white women, deeply passionate about ending violence against women, but when it came to talking about race, we were really ill-equipped. There was a lot of emotion in the room, there were tears in the room, but bottom line, we did not have the skills. So for me, as someone who had this broad idea of what equity could look like, what fairness would look like, I knew that if there was an elephant in the room that was keeping the system in place, there was no way we were going to get to any sort of liberation. So for me, that was 35 years ago. I feel like I need to stop saying that number of years, it just makes me feel a bit like I’ve been around for a while. But 35 years ago, I had a pivot where I had, wanted to work on racial justice, and I did it fortunately, both through community-based organizations and through working in the public sector. So that background on me, love government, and I also am a white woman, really committed to working to change systems and structures for our collective humanity. So as a part of that, six years ago, started, leaving the city of Seattle, started the Government Alliance on Race inequity with Professor John Powell from UC Berkeley, the head of the Othering and Belonging Institute. John had been very supportive of the work that we had been doing in Seattle. The goal of GARE is that we’re trying to create a movement of people working in the, at the local level, cities, counties, states, port authorities, housing authorities. We’ve got members from government across the spectrum and across every single region in the country. Over the past six years, we’ve doubled in size every single year, and our aspiration is not just to talk about race, but to use tools to put theory into action, ultimately so that we get to different outcomes at the community level. So Leon had a map, I have a map, you can’t read the font, it’s a long list, but like I said, we have grown. What started six years ago, more than six years ago, was just a few jurisdictions working on racial justice, and now close to 200 cities and counties across the country.
Great, so thank you, Julie, for, for kind of, for us, this was the welcoming introduction of who we were, before we kind of, who we are, who we were and who we are. But we also, as we get started, and we again, also want to appreciate Dr. Pettis as he was acknowledging the history of, of San Jose, also want to acknowledge the land that we’re on, that for us is also important as we do this work. The present-day Muequma Olene tribe is comprised of all of the knowing surviving American Indian lineage, Aboriginal to the San Francisco Bay region, who trace their ancestry through the missions of Dolores, Santa Clara, and San Jose. They were also members of the historic federally-recognized Verona Band and the Almeida County. The Aboriginal homeland of the Muequma Olone tribe includes the following counties: San Francisco, San Mateo, most of Santa Clara, Almeida, Contra Costa, and portions of Napa, Santa Cruz, and Solano. Spanish mission culture disrupted and undermined the Olene social structures and way of life. The Muequma Olene tribe are active participants in the revival of Olene people across the east and south bay. Key to their success is in their involvement in unearthing and analyzing their ancestral remains in ancient burial sites, which allows them to recapture their history and to reconstruct the present and future of their people. This land was their home long before we made it ours.
Thanks, Leon. So we want to pause for just a moment to talk a little bit about values. And there’s a lot of racial justice organizations that when they start with the topic of race, they will approach it from the perspective that people have the wrong values, or organizations have the wrong values. Interestingly enough, when sociologists ask people in the United States what distinctly held values they hold, people consistently say they care about equality and justice. It’s one of the things that’s rated highest across the country. So we say we have the value for equality and justice, and yet, like I said, we’ve got racial inequities across every single indicator for success. So it’s not just enough to say that we have a value, it’s important for us to think about it from a perspective of what it is that we’re doing with our values. It’s also important to think about it from a perspective of history and the way that we’re socialized. So from the very foundation of this country, you can think about the perspective of a statement like “all men are created equal,” Thomas Jefferson writing in the Declaration of Independence, this idea of equality. But of course, when Thomas Jefferson wrote “all men are created equal,” it was intended for white men who owned property. And so our idea of equality has shifted pretty dramatically over the course of centuries, century after century. We’re also socialized around ideas of our values. And so on a daily basis, millions of schoolchildren reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, saying the words “with liberty and justice for all.” It’s a way of socializing kids where we think about liberty and justice, and yet I know for myself, even as a kid, I could look across my community and see that justice wasn’t quite attained yet. It’s also important for us to think about government. So the statement “government of the people, by the people, for the people shall not perish from the earth,” Lincoln writing in the Gettysburg Address. For me, those are really powerful words that I would submit to you are aspirational as well. We have not yet achieved “government of the people, by the people, and for the people.” Who government serves, who benefits? What we’re actually achieving? It’s aspirational. We’ve got work to be done there. So thinking about our values, let’s think about what those values are, but we also have to recognize the role of government in relation to values. So over the vast majority of our country’s history, laws, policies, practices have been passed that have created racial inequities. Racial inequities are not just random, they’re not natural, we have them because they were intentionally created. So laws around who could vote, who could be a citizen, who could own property, who was property, whose land was whose, all of those were laws that were passed century after century after century that created racial inequities. And so the fact that we have them today might not be too surprising, because what happened was not the case that one day government woke up and said, “my bad, we made some mistakes.” We had change taking place because of community organizing, marching in the street, demanding that change take place. That’s why we have a Civil Rights Act, a Fair Housing Act, a Voting Rights Act. That legislation took place because of community. And so in the beginning, when I want to thank and acknowledge community, we need to have community helping us to make government everything that it can and should be. And I always want to be careful, because those milestone pieces of legislation that I acknowledge, they’re huge milestones. I don’t want to be dismissive of those, but the truth is, is that some of the inequities that we see today are actually worse than they were at the time of the civil rights movement. So when we look at the racial wealth gap, or the unemployment rate, or our education system, some of those inequities are worse. And so us just patting ourselves on the back and saying, you know, “we passed legislation to make discrimination illegal,” when we left an entire system that still benefits some and to the detriment of others, we’ve got to be able to step back and think about what that system is. So proactively work on policies and practices that advance racial justice. Now, we lead with the topic of race, and I want to be clear that we haven’t solved for sexism, or heterosexism, or ableism. We still got a lot of isms that take place, and we need to be working on those, but want to be clear that the reason, it’s not just random that Race Forward works on race specifically, we lead with the topic of race, recognizing that we need to use an intersectional approach. So first, the reason why we lead with the topic of race, first thing, I said it already, the depth and pervasiveness of racial inequities. Pervasiveness, it’s not getting better. Sometimes that needle is going the wrong way. Second, racial anxiety is on the rise. Racial anxiety is a term that sociologists came up with a couple of decades ago, recognizing that people can sometimes feel tension in talking about race, especially as our country’s demographics are shifting, more and more racial anxiety. The challenge, though, is that if we can’t talk about something, we’re not going to be able to solve for it. So the solution of racial anxiety is not to, not to ignore it, but for us to figure out those productive ways of talking about race. productive ways of talking about race. Third thing, learning an institutional and structural approach to working on institutional and structural racism can actually teach us tools that can be used on sexism and heterosexism and other isms. So building that skill, it's replicable. Last thing is that specificity matters. When people say, "I just want to talk about equity generally," the truth is, is that we're not going to get to the specific solutions, that what we need to work on heterosexism is not the same as we need to work on racism. So we have to have enough skills so that we can come up with the right solutions for the right challenges. Also have to, when I talk about an intersectional approach, recognize that none of us lead in, you know, sort of silos, that we all have multiple ways that our identities come together. So when I was in the city of Seattle and lettered Gender Equity and Pay Study, Seattle had been named as the city with the worst pay gaps for women. Well, because we had a Race and Social Justice Initiative, we not only looked at pay gaps for women, we looked at it by race, too, because it turns out that the experiences of white women versus women of color, the experiences of white men versus men of color, pretty big differences there. So using an intersectional approach means that we can look at those complexities, don't have to shy away from them. So the approach that we use and that we're going to focus on today, three prongs, three strategies. Number one, we have to be able to normalize conversations about race. If you all come into the room and think that we're just going to be talking about who's a good or a bad person, who's a racist, who's not a racist, other people are talking about institutional and structural racism, we're not going to have a productive conversation because we're going to be butting heads. We're going to come up against each other. We have to be able to have a shared set of definitions that leads to a productive conversation. We also have to be operationalizing racial equity, that it's not enough just to get that shared understanding. Have seen too many years of trainings where people go to training, sometimes, you know, a couple of decades ago, it was called diversity training, and then came along cultural competency training, and all sorts of trainings have taken place. But if people just go back to their jobs and keep doing their jobs the exact same way, well, so what was the purpose of the training? So we have to normalize conversations about race in order to change our policies and practices and change our systems. Now, for us, data is a really big part of the work that we're doing. Racial inequities are not just about whether people like each other or whether they're getting along. They're about outcomes at the community level, which can be measured. We can track our progress around whether we're creating change or not. So that's how we operationalize. Organize. Many people think about organizing what I mentioned before, people organizing at the community level. But the work that GARE is doing is actually looking at the resources that you all have amongst your staff. The thousands of people who work here are a huge resource to bring about change, to actually insert racial equity into decision-making processes. So building that internal infrastructure, the skills and the expertise, but doing it in partnership with community. That is not work that should be done alone. It's got to be done in partnership. So the three things highlighted here also have to be united around a vision. Sometimes, you know, when I talk about normalizing conversations about race, it almost feels like we've normalized the fact that we've got racial inequities, that headline after headline comes out and we've got kind of a shrug of our shoulders as if that's the way that it is. For us, it's not the way that it is. We have a vision for a different reality. And the tactics to get there are normalize, operationalize, and organize. And I think it's back to you.
Yeah, thank you, Julie. So we want to spend a little time on the normalizing space with you. Julie talked about the importance of developing a shared analysis on language around racism and equity, but also to really understand the urgency of why you should prioritize this within the work you're doing on council. I want to start, as we talk about the normalizing, kind of give you a sense of where the National League of Cities started four years ago when we launched REO. A member, I mentioned earlier, was in the backdrop of Ferguson. Clarence Anthony, who's in the video here to the left, is our CEO. He was the first non-white CEO of a national public interest group. So he, as a black man, former mayor from South Bay, Florida, served as mayor for 24 years. Prior to him coming on board as president and CEO of, CEO and executive director of NLC, all of the public interest groups, the National Governance Association, US Conference of Mayors, National Conference of State Legislatures, all of those have been run by white men. And so when he stepped into this role as CEO with the backdrop of Ferguson, he wrestled with, and he says this all the time as a CEO, being the first non-white having to deal with issues of race for a membership that represents over 19,000 cities, towns, and villages, which essentially, we have a membership that represents a lot of older white men who are mayors of a lot of these smaller towns and villages. And so we stepped into the space, launching REO, trying to figure out what the work would look like. Having a partner like GARE was really important very early on, because they were, as you heard from Julie, doing a lot of the work. And our goal was not reinventing the wheel. How do we leverage the tools and resources that GARE has while also NLC thinks about its strength about the work we could bring? So this was the first real talk. The full video is on our website, but we want to play kind of the first three minutes of it that, for me, I think starts with really talking about how we start unpacking the normalizing. So we'll press play on this.
Tim, you have written a book about this subject from a different perspective. What are your thoughts, opening thoughts, about where we are in America right now?
Well, you know, in the three minutes, you know, three to five that we've been given, I'll do my best to answer it. And I know we're going to get deeper into this conversation as we go, so I'll save some of what I want to talk about for that. But I really appreciate the way that you framed the discussion at the outset, because at least on two occasions, I heard you reference something that we really don't do very much in this country, and that is, you referenced systemic racism, and you referred to it in that way. And I think that's important. In fact, it's critical, not just for the National League of Cities effort, but for our conversation as a country. Because too often what we do, and I think we all know this, is we look at racism as that thing that happened in Charleston. That is to say, and when I say "that thing that happened," I'm not talking about the generations of institutional racism. I'm talking about the thing that happened this summer. We look at that as racism. We say, "Well, Dylann Roof walks into a church and massacres nine people, and the city comes together, and the state comes together, and the country grieves," and that's racism. And so, and then we sort of wash our hands of it, because we say, "Well, thankfully, that doesn't happen every week. That doesn't happen all the time. That's an anomaly." But we have to be prepared to look at racism as something that's far deeper than that, and not about bigotry, not about overt hatred, and not just about that type of random retail violence, because that's retail violence. We've got wholesale violence. And by that, I mean, if you're going to understand what happened in Baltimore in the last six months, you cannot start with Freddie Gray, and you cannot start even with the police department in Baltimore. You have to start with the fact that that is a community that was wrecked by so-called urban renewal. That was violence. When they come in and they put the interstate through your community, and they knock down your business, and they knock down your apartments, and they make folks huddle into small crowded housing, and they essentially lock them in a holding pen. I mean, we talk about housing and education, we talk about neighborhoods as if it's not about racism. We act like folks just ended up where they ended up. But let's be clear, this thing that we in this country call the ghetto, that was created, and it wasn't created by black people, and it wasn't created by poor people. It was created by folks who were usually not black and definitely not poor as a holding pen for the people they didn't want to live amongst them. So we have to be prepared to call that violence. If you don't call zoning laws and redlining violence, even though it does violence, and you don't call it racism, then how are we going to solve that? So I want us to frame this conversation the way that you've done it. And I think that's where we are as a country. We're still stuck in this mode of describing racism as this interpersonal thing, rather than understanding it structurally and institutionally. And I think until we get to that place, where we can talk about not just that individual cop who does something wrong in the community, which we can see plenty of examples of that, but until we deal with the mentality that says that spatial isolation, segregation, residential isolation, black and brown kids going to schools 12 times more likely to be places of concentrated poverty, that's not an accident. People didn't choose that. And so I think that's where we need to go, is to frame the conversation in a way that reminds us that we're talking about systemic and structural violence, and we can't just talk about the sort of retail-level stuff, as important as that is, and as horrific as a hate crime is. You know, to be really honest, at the risk of being hyperbolic, aspects of this country's history have been an intergenerational hate crime against certain people. And that's just the truth. We don't like to use language like that, you know, sounds un-American, unpatriotic, whatever kind of terminology we use, but that's real. And unless we're prepared to do it that way and have that conversation that way, I'm afraid we'll keep spinning our wheels, coming back, having the same conversations over and over and over again. The reason that low-income black folks were the ones hit hardest in New Orleans was not an accident. And what was stunning to me about it, and I lived there for 10 years, the only people that were shocked by what happened, for the most part, were white folks. Black folks weren't shocked that they got uprooted. They weren't shocked that they got left behind and forgotten. That was the history of that community, right? Urban renewal did that. Interstate highway construction, right through the Treme, the oldest free black neighborhood in this country, did that. And so it was just same thing, different day. A little bit more extreme, and the cameras were on, and, you know, they made movies about it. But it was the same stuff that had always been happening. So we have to go back to that systemic understanding, which is something I think the movement historically knew, but most of our leaders have sometimes forgotten.
Wow. So we're going to have a real conversation today, aren't we? I think I'm ready. I think I'm...
So that was, so that was four and a half years ago. And as you could tell, Clarence Anthony, who's our CEO right there, he's never a loss for words, but you could tell that he was in that moment trying to figure out what did Tim Wise just say in three and a half minutes, and what's our charge at the National League of Cities to help city leaders really unpack what he just said in three and a half minutes? And so the normalizing space, the reason why we started with this, is really the training we do. While we don't have the luxury of time with you today, but it's really important for city leaders to be committed to really understand at the depth of what Tim Wise is saying. As we talk about critical terminology, we'll name some of it. We obviously want to make sure we name some of the terminology as we talk about the work, but also recognizing there's a lot more normalizing that needs to happen. One of the things that he talked about, and I think all of us that have been in this space of equity, talk about the, if there's one thing, and again, not knowing where you guys are on the council, but always just important that you walk away not using the words equity and equality as the same word. They're not the same word, right? And there are many different versions of this, and I want to acknowledge that, just as I, at least for this, in this space, want to at least acknowledge they're not the same thing. Equality, again, three people from behind the fence trying to watch a game, and you give them all the same thing from behind the fence. There are three people, they all don't need the same thing if the goal is for them to watch the game from behind the fence. Equity is asking them, what do they need? The person on the left doesn't need anything, can watch the game just fine from behind the fence. The person in the middle needs two boxes if the goal is to watch the game from behind the fence, and the person on the right needs a ramp if the goal is for all three of them to watch the game from behind the fence. For those that are in this equity space, we realize that this is too simplistic in really understanding the depth of really understanding equity. We show this just as a, in a very intro level, just so you know that equity and equality are not the same thing. The complexities of equity and equality, there are a whole bunch of questions you can start asking. Is the fence right? Are the ground, is the ground wrong? You know, the assumption is that people are at different heights, but, you know, why are we making some assumptions about their height level? Why are they behind the fence? How come they're not in the stands? How come they're not playing in the game? How come they don't own the team? There's a whole lot of questions that you could ask, right, as you're understanding the nuances of equity. But just at a very introductory level, making sure you're not using equity and equality in the same, in the same way is really important as you're committed to doing this work. But if we're getting more explicit, why leading with race? Want to reinforce what Julie said, right, earlier. When we look at the data, whether we're talking about infant mortality to life expectancy, race is still one of the strongest predictors of one's success in this country. So whether we're talking about income, whether we're talking about education, housing, health, race still continues to be one of the strongest predictors of one's success in this country. One of the studies that reinforces that was a study that the Center for Disease Control put out, looking at the maternal mortality rates of women across this country. They controlled for the background of the woman, whether the educational background, how much money they made, where they lived, controlled for everything else, and then just looked at the race of that woman. And when controlling for everything else, black women were still two to three times higher to die from maternal mortality rates, right? So to that point, race still being one of the strongest predictor, it's not just showing up when we're talking about health, right? And it's not just talking about black and white, right? When we look at our criminal justice system, when we look at our educational system, when we look at unemployment, when we look at housing costs, to Julie's point, we have normalized and just have accepted that this racial inequity is okay, right? And so the question is, why is race still the strongest predictor or one of the strongest predictors of one's success? And what's the work that needs to happen in understanding that? And so when we talk about racial equity, racial equity then requires us to close the gaps. Our work, if we still see that racial equity is the strongest predictor of one's success, you heard Julie early, say this earlier, we don't, we want to, we don't want to see that. We want to see where race is no longer predicting one's success. So racial equity work is closing the gap where race is no longer predicting one's success while improving outcomes for everyone. Both are really important in doing this work, because that's, for us, where many times city leaders get tripped up. It's like if we're being intentional about realizing that race is the strongest predictor, we're being targeted, because we know by looking at the data, race is still the strongest predictor. And we're doing that not just because we want to be helpful or want to help people that are, people in different racial groups, but we recognize it has larger benefits and values. And one of the stories that I tell, because before Julie shared her background, and my background is youth development. Before I took on this role, a lot of the work I did was around youth engagement, violence prevention, childhood obesity. And one of the stories that really struck me as I was pivoting into this role five years ago, was the work that the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation had invested around reducing childhood obesity rates by 2016. For all of us that were in that space with the investment around childhood obesity, they poured a half a billion dollars into trying to reverse the childhood obesity trends. NLC was one of those that really tried to help city leaders pivot their mindset from not seeing the health issues as a personal responsibility. You know, 14 years ago, I remember traveling, working on this with city leaders, and there was a shifting of mindset where they were saying, "Well, these kids need to stop eating junk food and stop playing video games." Like, that was the mindset 15 years ago. Like, there's nothing the government needed to do. So in those 10, 15 years of the work, we saw the shift. There was clear shift, policy changes, we had complete streets policies, we had a shared use agreements. We got politically correct. We moved from calling it joint use agreements to shared use agreements, because folks were worried about what joint use agreements meant in the political culture, right? And we, you know, land use agreements around community gardens, all wonderful things we started to see happen. And so we fast-forwarded 2016, and RWJF, Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, started to see whether childhood obesity rates were going down. And so what did they find? For early adolescents, it was starting to see a decline. For middle adolescents, it was starting to plateau, and for late adolescents, it wasn't spiking as much. And so there was starting to be a celebration of maybe we've seen the childhood obesity rates, you know, start to reverse for children across the country. So it wasn't until after you spent the half a billion dollars that someone asked the question, "Is it going down for everyone?" And what did they find? When they looked at for blacks, Hispanics, and natives, it was still spiking. So you literally could reduce childhood obesity rates, but still it spiked for the populations that needed it the most, right? And so that was a big lightbulb moment for me, as we talk about the need, if you know the data is telling you that populations are impacted the most, then how are you being targeted? Dr. Powell that Julie mentioned, Dr. John Powell, called the term targeted universalism. How are you being targeted in your process, but universal in your goals, right? And that's the work, as we talk about the intentionality and what that looks like. And so in addition to thinking about understanding the differences between equity and equality and why we lead with race, we also want to acknowledge in the short period of time that we have with you, how we think, our bias and how we think. That's also important. We want to just at least acknowledge that all of us as humans have a way of thinking, how we put things into meaning, individual, collective meaning, how our brain sorts things. A lot of it happens in our unconscious space, as you may have known, and a lot of, in that unconscious space, is where our racial bias is. And so I, you know, as I think about how we quickly sort things into information, we put things into associations, we quickly, you know, sort them into categories, fill in the gaps, you know, I was, you know, I had, what do they call it, frog legs for the first time. Uh... For the first time when I was down in Jacksonville, Florida. And I said, well, that thing tastes just like chicken, right? I put it into the chicken category, right? So all of us, and, and from our brains, we sort this out. And I think it's important to acknowledge, and I just want to make sure as you understand it as we think about it. I want to try to cue this video up and actually want to see how well you do in our limited spaces of interaction to see how well you observe what you're about to see. So let's cue that up. Got to go back again and...
This is an awareness test. How many passes does the team in white make?
How many passes?
The answer is 13.
13? Not bad.
But did you see the moonwalking bear?
So one of the reasons why, first of all, I want to acknowledge for those, for those that know what moonwalking is, I don't exactly call what that bear was doing, moonwalking. But that was not the point of it, right? The, the point is really to acknowledge how there are things that could be happening around us that all of us may not be paying attention to, right? And that's one way to really understand how our brains work, how we function, and not realizing there are things that could be literally happening around us that impact how we, how we are, are not making decisions. Now, I want to try another thing with, for those in the room and on, on the dais to see how well you do here. So in your loudest voices, tell me what color are the lines of the text? Loudest voices? Not bad. Let's try that again. Pretty good. Let's try again. So again, the reason I'm cutting, I really wanted to acknowledge again in the spirit of understanding bias, couple of things that happened there. What happened? One, we've all been taught that color means one thing, and also a shade of color means one thing. And so when you find yourself having to reconcile when the color doesn't align with the word, it takes your brain a little bit of time to process, well, why is, why is it not lining up? It doesn't mean you can't figure it out, but it just acknowledges each of us to a person. And I still, that's why I wasn't doing it with you because I knew I would make the same mistake. Because even when you know it's coming, sometimes it's hard. But the other piece that I want to acknowledge, all of us to a person, for the most part, saw color just fine. No one who says I'm, I, I don't see color when they talk about race, they're lying. You see color just fine. It's how you have associated color as we talk about its impact in your decision. So to acknowledge that you don't see color, it's only going to reinforce your bias, right? Because we all have been socialized that color means something as we think about race. And that's important. If you don't acknowledge it, you will lean in to your bias. So I want to, I think I'll turn it over to Julie.
Yep. So Leon's been talking about bias, and we want to break down bias into two different categories. And explicit bias versus implicit bias. Implicit bias, lots and lots of research around, that we see everything from how doctors treat patients, how school teachers treat children. Across the board, amazing research in the field of implicit bias. What implicit bias is, well, let me start with explicit bias. Sometimes I think about explicit bias from a perspective of old-school racism, right? It was direct, it was conscious, it was in your face, there was no question about it. If you were looking for housing and there was a sign in the window that said whites only, that was explicit bias. Implicit bias is expressed indirectly, and oftentimes people are not even aware of their bias. And so the example listed here around a property manager doing more criminal background checks on African-Americans than whites, you ask the property manager, do you do that? And the property manager, in fact, might say something like, I don't see color. I treat everyone the same. Then you look at the data and you find a different pattern. So when I was the director of the Office for Civil Rights in Seattle, we did do fair housing testing. And I want to share it just because I think there's a little bit of a buzz these days around the topic of implicit bias that I get nervous about. So the research around implicit bias training is, is that implicit bias training is largely ineffective. And it is because it is playing out at the unconscious level. People are not choosing to be biased. And so just sending them to training to try and elevate their consciousness, if it's not piggybacked with interruptions, institutional interruptions, then that training is going to be largely ineffective. So when I say an interruption, let me give you an example. When we did fair housing testing in the city of Seattle, did it on multiple protected classes. When we did it based on race, would send a white person and an African-American person out to the same apartment building, same day. They had the same application, same rental history, same income, and applied for housing. And then we compared their experiences after the fact. So in a, in the city of Seattle, what we found was 69% differential treatment. It's over two-thirds of the time that white people got treated better than people of color. Now, I was responsible for the enforcement of anti-discrimination laws. So my goal was not just to do this testing for like an academic exercise, really wanted to use it as a tool to try and get to different outcomes. So filing charges of discrimination is a really motivating tool at times. To file a charge of discrimination, you have to meet the legal standard of the law. That meant that sometimes I had to go back and do testing two, three, four times to establish a pattern. And it had to meet the standard of egregious treatment. So it couldn't be just like, well, you showed the white person the bike racks and you didn't show the African-American person the bike racks. Like, that's not how courts have defined egregious treatment. Egregious treatment means that it's a different price that is charged or the accessibility of housing. So if a white person is told, we've got five units, I'll show them all to you. And then the African-American person is told, you know, I think we only had one and it's not available anymore. That's about the accessibility of housing. So in those cases where it met the standard of illegal discrimination, I filed charges of discrimination and went after those landlords quite successfully. The challenge, however, was that there were a whole bunch of cases that did not meet the standard for illegal discrimination. There was, and I will say that there's not a single instance of explicit bias. There are no signs in the window that said whites only, all sorts of other stuff. So we wanted to interrupt those as well. So ended up going to work with the Rental Housing Association, which in Seattle, about 95% of landlords are part of the Rental Housing Association. A little bit of trepidation around what their response was going to be. But when I went to sit down with them, well, first I met with individual landlords. And the across-the-board response was concern, a concern perhaps that they were going to be charged with illegal discrimination. But it was also a lot of sincerity around, I'm a good person. I would never discriminate. That is not me. And so then the question is, it becomes, what is it? What is it that's going on? And what is the interruption that we can develop? So worked with the Rental Housing Association to come up with a checklist. So regardless of who comes to knock on the door, the same procedure is followed. And we did implicit bias training. Implicit bias training that included institutional interruptions. Those two things together can make a difference that results not only on individual behaviors, but changes in outcomes. So the understanding of individual and institutional implicit bias is critical. Implicit bias not just playing out amongst like individual people making decisions. So I want to give you an example of that. And this is taking what I just said about implicit versus explicit, but also delineating between individuals and institutions. And this is based on work that we did with a police department. Now, we have about a dozen different versions of this chart that takes, like, there's one that's based on health, there's one that's based on libraries, there's one that's based on parks and recreation. But looking across all the different functions of government, how do we see institutional explicit bias playing out? How do we see institutional implicit bias playing out? And we always focus on getting the people who are most directly involved with something to do this level of analysis, that it comes back to what I said in the beginning around inside-outside organizing. So in this case, we're working with a set of police officers from the city of Seattle after a consent decree, Department of Justice investigation. And so what we were doing was trying to get them to identify where they saw different types of bias playing out. So these are examples that came directly from police officers. The example they gave of institutional and explicit bias is a police department refusing to hire people of color. And we had told them that it was okay for them to think about like, you know, broad range of things. And this example, it's really important to name that we better not be seeing it very much these days because in fact, it's illegal. But understanding different types of bias is critical because there's different interventions based on what the bias is. So if you see a police department that explicitly says, we don't hire X, you can file a lawsuit, you can file a charge of discrimination. That's the tactic that you can use in that instance. The example of institutional and implicit bias that they came up with had to do with drug use and drug dealing. And they were, it was such a fascinating conversation because in fact, the statistics that we know around drug use and drug dealing, maybe we can get interaction, anyone here, who uses drugs more, white people or people of color? It's slight variations depending on the specific drug, but overall drug use, white people use drugs more. Who deals drugs more, white people or people of color? Pharmaceutical companies. Yeah. Check on that. So again, overall rates, really, really close, but slightly more white people deal drugs. When you look at our criminal justice system, every single step of the process from who gets stopped, who gets arrested, who gets charged, who gets convicted, who goes to jail, and how long they go to jail for, every single step of that process, we see more and more racial disproportionality despite the fact that there's more white people doing drugs in the first place, which leads to the outcome we see today, the, the, over the mass incarceration of people of color in our prison system. So police officers, in looking at that continuum of how drugs were, the laws were being enforced and what the different choice points were, where it was possible to have an impact to get to a different outcome, identified the fact that the vast majority of their enforcement was based on street-level drug deals. So the question around how different communities use drugs is important for us to think about. Because if in fact, there's different patterns where street-level drug dealing is more likely to be occurring in some neighborhoods versus others, but we've got white people who are dealing drugs at college parties or college dorms, the pharmaceuticals, social settings, but police resources are being designated towards street-level drug dealing. That's the very, very beginning of the system of creating mass incarceration, people of color. So it's complicated, right? And that's one of the things that we dig into. Because in fact, at this point, sometimes when we're working with police officers, the response will be, you know, they'll, they'll say, well, you're telling us not to do our jobs. That's not what we're saying. Because in fact, street-level drug dealing is something that's not positive for neighborhoods. If you have drugs being dealt in front of your house, your business, you don't want that there, right? The question is not whether police officers should be enforcing that law. The question is whether the laws are the right laws in the first place and whether there's better ways of enforcement that don't result in such stark disproportionals, right? So stepping back to think about the practices, the policies. Responding to 911 calls is a good thing, but I'll tell you, we were working with the city of Dubuque, Iowa. One of my favorite moments in working with a police chief, feel like I'm talking too much about police here. But it's, it was a good group. And the police chief from Dubuque, Iowa was talking about the fact that he had been going through the lists of 911 calls. And he was struck by the number of calls that people had called in to report there's a black person standing on the street corner. And he had said, he said that, you know, my idea was always that it's good customer service to respond to 911 calls. That was a choice point that the 911 system was responding to. The question that needed to be asked is, is there illegal behavior taking place? And what the police chief said is that I can add a screening question. 911 calls come in, I can have my operator ask that question. And if there's no crime being committed, we don't need to send a police officer out. So the question around sort of the policy or the practice, changing behaviors, really meaningful things that can help get to different outcomes. So what, how police resources are being used and who's impacted, important for our consideration. Individual and explicit. An example of that would be a police officer calling someone a racial slur while arresting them. In fact, the Department of Justice investigation, there is a documentation of a whole pattern of that taking place in Seattle. There's no question, multiple videos documented that that had been taking place. So again, the question is around tactics. When that takes place, we need to have strategies to deal with it. The problem, however, is that frequently we act as if, oh, it's just one bad officer. And if we deal with that one bad officer, then we're going to solve our criminal justice problems. Well, in truth, when we have laws, policies, and practices that across the board create racial inequities, just dealing with one bad apple is never going to cut it. Individual and implicit, an example of that, a police officer being more likely to call for backup if the suspect is a person of color. You might ask that officer, do you do that? The officer might say, no, I would never do that. I just follow policy. You look at data, and looking at data, and looking at impact is critical. We don't, we care less about intent because we want to look at the outcomes, the conditions that are occurring. So looking at whether there's a pattern that is taking place, and again, coming up with a strategy for interrupting it. So understanding these four different types of bias, implicit, explicit, individual, institutional, is a really important part of getting to that shared analysis. Not only for, you know, it's not just an intellectual exercise, but it's because there's different strategies to intervene. And we need to be able to really focus in on that implicit institutional bias because that's where we see the biggest possibilities for change. And it's the most sort of unexplored or unaddressed type of bias. So in a more interactive environment, we would typically, in a workshop, want to have some conversation with you around where you might see bias playing out in San Jose. And perhaps instead of doing it exactly that way, we've been talking at you for quite a while. Maybe now would be an opportune time either for you to ask a question or if you do have an example of institutional and implicit bias that you think it would be important for the city to explore.
Thank you. Let me just do a check-in because I want to make sure I understand what the, you like to accomplish. And then also make sure there's time for everybody in the community to be able to speak. Do you, how, how long would you anticipate the interactive portion? Then what more would you like to present? I just want to make sure we have time for everybody.
So, so we were planning probably, we probably, we're planning until, to go until about, maybe about four. I think there was a discussion from four to 4:30 is kind of what we had.
I suspect public comment may take quite a bit longer than that.
Okay.
So I just want to be mindful of that.
So would you like us to...
We certainly can engage, but I was hoping that perhaps, is it possible we could do the dialogue with the council after public comment at some point?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and maybe we could hold that question?
Sure.
And we'll deal with that one. And we'll deal with that one first?
Great. Perfect.
Okay, that'd be great.
Good. So we'll, so we'll come back to the question space, and I think we want to, again, just want to acknowledge where we've been. We've been talking about normalizing the first of the three components. So if you think it's hard talking about equity versus equality, or naming race, or talking about bias, or institutional bias, it's even harder calling out racism and naming that very explicitly. And many times, as you heard from the video from Tim Wise, many times when people think about individual, when they think about racism, they think about it at the individual level. They think about the Dylann Roof example, or the, you know, individual acts of racism. The work that we do with cities, while it's important to really think about the work that needs to happen to deal with individual racism, is really to understand the work of city government in understanding institutional and structural racism. Institutional racism is the acknowledgement that there are policies, practices, procedures that have benefited white people over communities of color, whether intentionally or unintentionally or inadvertently. We know from our history and present that that exists. And that happens not just at one institution. It's not just happening within the educational system, or the, as you heard Julie talk about the criminal justice system. It's happening in multiple institutions, whether we look at our housing, workforce, transportation, et cetera. And so the acknowledgement that those inequities exist across multiple institutions is what the definition of structural racism is, right? Or systemic racism, right? And so we want to name that to be very clear, like what do we mean when we say institutional and systemic racism? While we also recognize this is not the time to do a full training, I also want to at least name it in a way that I'm not just saying it, but we're also bringing in a short video that kind of names it in a much more explicit way. It comes from a three-part PBS series called "The House We Live In." This is part three of the three-part series that was produced over 10 years ago, and I want to bring that into the room as context for really making sure the definition of institutional and structural racism resonates.
It was a time when hundreds of thousands of GIs came home ready to start families, but had no place to live.
In the 1930s, the federal government created the Federal Housing Administration, whose job it was to provide loans, or the backing for loans, to average Americans so they could purchase a home.
Federal programs and banks sank millions into the home construction industry. Their message to veterans, "You can afford a new home. Buy a new home now." Tax dollars helped make the single-family home a mass-produced consumer item. The American dream had a new name: suburbia.
We came to Levittown and we found the model house, and we walked in and we looked around. And of course, in the eyes of a young man who was raised in the ghetto, so to speak, it was an interesting experience, interesting lifestyle, seeing all the new modern conveniences. Very fascinating.
Eugene Burnett came home with almost a million other black GIs. They had fought for the country in segregated ranks. They returned hoping for equality and the American dream. For many, that dream was a new home for little money down and some of the easiest credit terms in history.
I went up to the salesman, "We're interested in your home. We're interested in buying one, and what is the procedure? Is there an application to be filled out?" So forth. So he looked at me, looked around, and he said to me, he says, "Listen, it's not me, but the owners of this development have not as yet decided to sell these homes to Negroes."
The FHA underwriters warned that the presence of even one or two non-white families could undermine real estate values in the new suburbs. These government guidelines were widely adopted by private industry. Race had long played a role in local real estate practices. Starting in the 1930s, government officials institutionalized a national appraisal system where race was as much a factor in real estate assessment as the condition of the property. Using this scheme, federal investigators evaluated 239 cities across the country for financial risk.
So that those communities that were all white, suburban, and far away from minority areas, they received the highest rating, and that was the color green. Those communities that were all minority or in the process of changing, they got the lowest rating, and the color red. They were redlined. As a consequence, most of the mortgages went to suburbanizing America, and it suburbanized it racially.
As homes in white communities appreciated in value, the net worth of these white families For most non-white families who stayed in urban neighborhoods, the housing market opened to them in the 50s and 60s was largely a rental market. You don't gain equity by paying rent.
Where one's family lives in America is not just a matter of taste and preference. You have the issue of housing and wealth. The majority of Americans hold most of their wealth in the form of home equity. So that's their nest egg. That's how they can finance the education of their offspring. That's how they can sort of save up for retirement. It's their savings bank, right? They're living in their savings bank.
My family, like a lot of families, was in Detroit, struggling to buy a house. You had a dual housing market, one white, one black. A housing market with one with a lot of demand, another housing market with very little demand. My father lives in the house that I grew up in. The house today, five-bedroom house, is worth about $20,000. The same house bought in the suburbs would be worth today about $320,000. So whites moving to the suburb were being subsidized in the accumulation of wealth, while blacks were being divested.
And these were public policy decisions in which, on one hand, people were given access to property, given title, and subsequently wealth. And on another hand, where people were not given access to property, did not generate wealth, and did not generate the kind of opportunity for the next generation.
So wanted to share again just that short clip. It's, would encourage you to watch the fuller documents, a 50-minute video. It unpacks that a lot more. And curious that even as you reflect, I imagine many of you, if not all of you, probably have heard of redlining before, and may have understood that local government has played a role, but even still might have learned something new as you're looking at this video of understanding, the understanding, the depth of it, as we think about its implications. And I really just want to again acknowledge Dr. Pettis, because I think what he did to really start off this session was really name that in a localized context here in San Jose. Unfortunately, I didn't have the San Jose maps, which is why I'm glad that Dr. Pettis at least was able to name it. Because if you think about current implications of redlining today in San Jose, I appreciated how he talked about how the suburbs were created outside of San Jose, from Palo Alto to et cetera, very much connected to your history. And this was an example of Mobile, Alabama, looking at their redlining maps, looking at their populations to date, realizing that those same areas where the redlining is, as you heard Tim Wise say earlier, this wasn't by accident, right? These neighborhoods, where people live, where they choose to live, it wasn't by accident, right? And so as you think about the need to be targeted, as we mentioned the word targeted universalism, how then are you targeted in your policies, in your strategies, in your investments? As you think about prioritizing, realizing the history and its current day implications very much impact how you think about how you strategize, how you budget, how you think about the work, how do you begin to operationalize it? And that was my great cue to turn it over to Julie.
Thanks, Leon. So we have gone through normalizing. We said we wanted to provide information about shared language, terminology, definitions. For the work that we do, the introductory language that's absolutely critical is that we have shared understanding around racial equity and racial inequity, that we know the difference between implicit bias and explicit bias, that it's not just a matter of individuals, but it's institutional as well. And then definitions around individual institutional and structural racism. So those are the definitions that we use for normalizing at the beginning. There's certainly a lot deeper level of analysis that we can go to, but that's the introduction. Want to shift to thinking about operationalizing racial equity, and I think I just...
She went back, went forward.
Thank you. And within operationalizing racial equity, we talk about using tools as ways to intervene in decision-making processes. And I want to say that tools are really more of a, it's more important that we think about them as a methodology as opposed to like a easy fix, right? That a tool is only as good as the people using it. I just demonstrated that this clicker is a tool, but if I don't know the right button to push, it's not a very good tool, right? And so when we work with jurisdictions around integrating racial equity into decision-making process, it's not just like, "Oh, here's a tool and it's going to work for you." No, it's why we're working both with, you know, your staff, your management, you as elected officials. So I want to talk about tools from a policy perspective. That historically, we know the, with redlining and the Federal Housing Administration, that there was an explicit way in which not only housing segregation was created and has been maintained, but it's had other consequences, right? That the accumulation of wealth because of homeownership means that it's not just that we've had segregated neighborhoods, but that we now have a racial wealth gap. So that is related to policy. And historically, it was explicit. We know that like with the housing foreclosure crisis, it too disproportionately targeted communities of color. So prior to the housing foreclosure crisis, the wealth gap was eight to one. Immediately after the housing foreclosure crisis, it was 20 to one. It's an example of how policies drive outcomes. Where we put city facilities, this is just a map around a single variable, and it's from the, from DC, the opposite side of the country. But we actually work to do opportunity mapping, which is a way of looking at both things that are perceived as positive and things that are perceived as negative, and looking at what's located where, sort of who gets the good stuff and who gets the bad stuff, and what opportunities exist and what opportunities don't exist. The location of city facilities is really important. The last thing, street lighting. I'll share a little story about the, why street lighting is up here as an example. And it goes back to the early days of when Seattle was first starting a race and social justice initiative. We had, Seattle is a city that has a relatively low homicide rate, and had a summer where we had a series of five young African-American men, who are boys, really, they were teenagers, who had been shot and killed. The mayor at the time was, said, "This is not us. This is not, you know, this, this level of violence, not okay." And he said, "I want to start a youth violence prevention initiative." Now, I said I worked for the city for 23 years. I saw some patterns of what happened sometimes. With all due respect, Mr. Mayor, I don't know whether that happens here, but sometimes when the mayor wants to do something, the first thing that happens is you get a team of people together and you go out to the neighborhood where, you know, something has happened. So it's a group of people rolling down the major thoroughfare in this neighborhood where these shootings had taken place. And again, we were there to talk about the youth violence prevention initiative, but what the mayor noticed was that in fact, streetlights were out. A lot of streetlights were out. And so he asked the question, "Why are all the streetlights out?" City Light, the electrical utility, who's the utility responsible for streetlights, superintendent was in the van. He had the answer you don't want to have when your mayor asks you a question. He said, "I don't know." What he did also say however, was that he was going to look into it, and it was in the middle of the race social justice initiative, the launch of using a racial equity tool. So the City Light superintendent convened a group of people, deployed them to use a racial equity analysis to look at this topic of streetlights. So it turned out that in Seattle, every single streetlight pole has a number on it. And so when the streetlight in front of your house or your business burns out, it's your responsibility to call the city and report that it's out, and then the city would deploy a truck and replace the streetlight. So in this neighborhood where it was a high percent of people with low incomes, high percent of people of color, lots of immigrants and refugees, asked the question, instead of the team looking at it, "Why is this not working?" Well, it wasn't rocket science. If you're in a neighborhood where, like, and I'll say, I had worked for the city for a while, and I didn't even know that it was my responsibility to call to report. But people who didn't know that was the system, all of the literature that did exist was in English, lack of trust in government, like you can just go down the list of all these reasons why people aren't calling to report their streetlights. The end result is that neighborhoods don't have street lighting. There's no city policy that says we're going to give inferior service to one neighborhood versus another. But again, we don't care about intent, we're looking at impact. Now, I will say, the typical response that government would do after coming up with this, "Aha, like this is a broken system, we got to fix it," is that the typical response would be the brochure response, that we would develop a brochure, and with all good intent, you know, we might go so far as to say, "We're going to put it in our City Light bills, you know, we're going to do bill stuffer so everyone will know." And the truth is that that's not very effective. So thankfully, we did not do brochures. What we did do was a review of how other cities replaced streetlights, because it turns out that there were other cities that used different systems, a geographic-based replacement. So that go into a neighborhood, change all the streetlights, you know the bulb life, and it keeps getting longer, whether it's 10 years, 15 years, don't have to come back for another 10 or 15 years to replace the streetlights. It was in the middle of the recession, and we were in the middle of a budget crisis. So cutting $100 million from the city budget, never a fun time. And we were really concerned, like, "Oh, changing this whole system sounds good, but it's going to cost more money." Well, it turned out it didn't cost money because the old system was really ineffective. Sending one truck out here, another truck out there, another truck over here, really ineffective system. So at the end of the day, we changed the system in such a way that it saved the city money and it provided better customer service, not just for the South End that was suffering the consequences, but the North End, that's a higher, a higher-income neighborhoods, more white people living there. Those neighborhoods benefited just as well. It's not like they woke up and thought, "Today's the day I get to call the city to get my streetlight replaced." They were happy to have it replaced without having to complain about it. Now, the word complain, there's a whole bunch in government that is based on complaint-based systems, whether we're talking about filling potholes, or removing graffiti, housing code violations, streetlight replacement, there are a whole bunch of things that are complaint-based systems. And what we found is time and time again, that those complaint-based systems worked better for neighborhoods with more money, more white people, more resources. And so we ended up not only changing the street lighting system, but changing some other systems as well, using a racial equity tool. So walking through a methodology where you're getting to clarity around what is the result that you're looking for? What's the end result? Analyzing data so that you'll be able to know whether you're making progress or not. Analyzing data so that you can do targeted community engagement. Too frequently, what we do is we'll say, "Oh, we're going to engage the community," but then we just do sort of one-size-fits-all, and we know that our community engagement oftentimes does not result in participation from communities of oftentimes does not result in participation from communities of color, from people with low incomes, et cetera. So have it using that data to drive our community engagement. And after we've got data, and after we've engaged community, then you develop the strategies. Got the strategies, implement the strategies. The last thing is around communications and accountability. Sometimes the communications piece of it can be thought of across every single phase, but at the end of the day, being strategic and thoughtful about how we talk about things is critical, because sometimes when we just start talking about disproportionality, looking at data, we perpetuate stereotypes or we trigger implicit bias. So having intentionality in the way that we talk about our strategies for implementation is critical. Last thing, around accountability. That means accountability for results. So when we're creating changes, we always want to go back to the beginning, analyze whether the desired results that we hope to achieve are actually being achieved, and if needed, figure out what needs to be... What else needs to be done? Maybe it's less of something else, but always focusing on the end result. So that's using a racial equity tool. Want to give a shout out to the GARE teams that were mentioned earlier. Across two years, they have learned around using a racial equity tool, routine decision-making processes, really important part of operationalizing racial equity. Have lots of examples around how racial equity tools can be used. I talked about streetlights. You can look at things like ban the box policies, contracting and procurement, the resources that are part of your budget, your operations, when it comes to contracting and procurement, who's benefiting from those. Looking at just like issue after issue, topic after topic, got lots and lots of examples of using a racial equity tool with the desire to actually interrupt decision-making processes so we're not just keep... Don't just keep perpetuating the status quo.
So just, I wanted to acknowledge is as we... As Julie just did a really great job going through what the operationalizing is, we hope it gives you a set of some specific examples, a complaint-based system, as well as showing that what the tool could look like, and acknowledging that here with the San Jose team, that there are folks already starting to use the... Use that tool, I think from a city council perspective. I think the question, the number of cities that where we find city council, as you know that the core team is starting to use that tool, how does that come before city council? As you... Maybe there's an intentionality of you developing a racial equity impact assessment statement that you want everything that comes before you presented in that way, so you're able to understand kind of how the teams are processing it and how they're using that in their decision-making. So it helps inform your discussion. So want to kind of acknowledge that there's some active things that you could do as a city council. And then also, the last piece of this is also acknowledging, kind of how do you think about organizing? What's the capacity, work that needs to happen, both within the city and in partnership with the community? What's kind of the infrastructure? We have a guide, again, in this space of some people want to go faster, some people want to go slower space, there are some practical things that we've put out, the National League of Cities, on how to get started from a city leadership perspective. These six steps about what city leaders are doing to set the example, how are you creating spaces to listen to the community? What commitments you're making as a city to kind of make a declaration around your commitment to this? The kind of infrastructure that you want to have in place? What commitments are you making to policy and systems change? And even a commitment to really having a plan, a plan, racial equity plan that you're holding yourselves accountable to and you're holding agencies to. So there are a number of examples that we want to encourage you as you're looking to figure out how fast or how slow you want to go, about what you can do that sometimes it's low to no cost in terms of a budget. Really just speaks to your commitment and how you want to get organized as a city. And so what I love about the work, as we've been seeing examples across the country there, a lot of this is... Gives you a sense of kind of what the work looks like to kind of get organized, and what the infrastructure needs to be in place. Want to also just commend the city, those that have been leading it here with the GARE teams, really starting to think about the structures here. And I know folks can hear the... Among the GARE... That are still here among the GARE teams could speak more about who's a part of that core team here within the city of San Jose. How are they represented across multiple agencies? What does that look like? What level of accountability are you putting in place to make sure that you as a city are really demonstrating your commitment to this? And so there are agreements that you're putting in place, there's a commitment to developing work plans, there are, you know, teeth you're putting into the space that it's not just a check the box, "Oh, we're doing racial equity." No, we really are committed to seeing it being embedded in the plans and how folks are using the tools. And so there are a number of profiles that the National League of Cities have put out that we encourage you to, you know, you can download off of our website. There are a number of cities that you can get a sense of how they're organizing, what it looks like, and even it can serve as models for you as you think about what can continue to build on the work that's happening in San Jose. One of those models we want to highlight, we want to highlight just two for you. One is the Louisville model, Louisville, the Louisville metro area. Their work started within their health department, their Center for Health Equity. They did a lot of work initially around data, looking at disparities, kind of really challenging themselves about how do we really understand the why behind those disparities? It really led them as a health department to really start naming institutional and structural racism. The mayor there, Mayor Fisher, has been very involved in really naming this work, realizing he has his platform, that he wants to figure out how he uses his platform to really find multiple ways to do the work. And one of the things that he took a leadership role is the work that needs to happen to really engage the community. And so there are a number of convenings that came out of... And it's still ongoing in Louisville, that has produced recommendations, that has driven how the city is prioritizing and making decisions around their racial equity agenda. And then he's also started building infrastructure. He has created liaisons from all of the agencies, have a racial equity liaison. They've committed to training across all of their staff, and I know some of that training has already started with the work that GARE has been doing here this past year. And he also built an office of equity and hired a chief equity officer. And so those kind of give you some high-level kind of sense of kind of what the organizing looks like. So Louisville is one example, and we can maybe talk about Austin.
Yeah, I would love to talk about Austin. Both Austin and Louisville participated in what was called Racial Equity Here, which was a partnership with Living Cities, where we worked with five cities across a two-year... On a two-year basis, to really do like an accelerated, in-depth immersion process. And so Austin, a little bit different in the approach that they took. A few highlights that I would give about Austin is that they did an amazing job of working in partnership with community-based organizations in the development of their racial equity tool. What that meant is, is that instead of... Sometimes within government, the silos or departments that can exist don't work very well from a community perspective. So, you know, within departments, it's like, well-intended, we're going to do community engagement about this park, or this transportation project, or this housing project, but it doesn't frequently come together and support the community. And so what Austin did was really focused on expanding relationships in a more authentic way, as opposed to like just providing outreach, but thinking about how government and community could work in closer partnership. They also integrated racial equity into their... The review of projects for bonds, and it was one of the primary criteria that they used to identify which projects were going to be included. Some of the infrastructure that they did as well, created an office for equity. The goal of that is not just to have an office where it's like, you know, whether the office is good or bad, or effective or ineffective. No, the goal of the office is to change the way that government does business. So have devoted some pretty significant resources to thinking about it across multiple departments.
Great. So we... This is where, as we've shared with you, kind of the three components, wanted to use that as a foundation for creating space for some of the comments and feedback. So we'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. It's a tremendous presentation. I hope, I think I certainly learned a lot, and I know we will continue to learn as we move forward. So thank you, Julie, Stephen, and Leon. Thank you for all the information you've provided us. And what I'd like to do is to go to public comment at this time, and then I'd be happy to start up again where you left off, or I interrupted you rather, where we can engage response to your questions. Just want to remind everybody, please submit a card if you'd like to speak. Everyone has two minutes, come on down when I call your name. Fernando Cesueta, Jennifer Terai, Robert Geary, Serena Alvarez, and Ramon Martinez. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Raza Historical Society of Santa Clara Valley, and also to let you know that I will be president of the Downtown Rotary Club of San Jose. And you'll be pleased to know that the theme for my year as president at Rotary will be diversity, celebrating diversity, equity, and inclusivity, which ties in exactly with Professor Petia and the rest of the speakers have raised today. If you have not read this book or seen this book that was written by Professor Petia, it's called "The Devil in Silicon Valley." Came out 25 years ago. It's as relevant today as when he wrote it. And it talks about the problems that are endemic in our society, and that is, until we all recognize that racism has been a primary factor since the institution and evolution of our country, we cannot resolve these problems. People do not believe that there is racism, but there is, and we see it every day in the news. We see it every day in our own leadership, nationally as well as locally. There are people out there that have inimical interests in mind, and we need to talk about it. And this is the step that you're taking, which is an important step, and that is to recognize that racism is at the root of many of our problems. I can tell you that people like Taylor Swift is talking about the inequity of how women are treated in this society. I can tell you that President Trump, to mention some, has treated people in an inequitable way, just by the way in which he has conducted himself, not in any political sense, but rather in a institutional sense of a president taking steps that are inimical to the rest of us. That is my comment, and I want to thank you all for taking this step forward. Thank you. Don't forget, there's a Raza Historical Society event next Monday night.
Thank you, Fernando. Welcome, Serena.
Good afternoon. My name is Serena Alvarez. I am the executive director of the Salvador E. Alvarez Institute for Nonviolence. My father traveled around the world to more than 20 countries and was honored by the Vatican, received a papal honor for his work in peace. And when he went to Soweto and went to Palestine and to Irish ghettos, he would come back, and even abroad, he taught them about the ghetto, or the bargos of East San Jose. And what he's... When he came back here, he would use the word apartheid, and that apartheid existed here in Silicon Valley. My father had the credibility, having seen it across the globe, that it's our reality. And as the executive director of the Institute for Nonviolence, I'm really grateful for Stephen Petia coming today and for the leadership of GARE in bringing... When I've spoken about structural violence, it's not something that people are familiar with very readily, and hearing that today as part of their... Sounded like your lexicon. We really need to normalize that here, because it's our existence here in San Jose. It was a wonderful afternoon. It was not a wonderful journey getting here. It was a difficult journey, and it really ought to have not been that difficult. When we had that long session to come to this vote and include the equity session, when we heard that we were asking too much, those are painful realities, and so all of this is very vividly real. The council members who brought the memo forward, I'm really, really grateful for you, because today it's appropriate we have an historian with us, because this is an historic day. So I want to make sure that your names are said. Sylvia Arenas, Magdalena Carrasco, Raúl Berales, Sergio Jiménez, and Maya Esparza. You made history. This is part of our history, because we need to move forward. And as my father would say, "The beans are on low." The beans did not get cooked today, they did not get finished today. We're going to have to cook the beans for a long time, but our community is used to cooking beans. And we're really good at it. So we're here like Cesar says, tenemos tiempo. Gracias.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Ramon Martinez from La Raza Historical Society. And I just wanted to comment a little bit about the importance of the work that you're going to be doing in these efforts that you're talking about. You know, they're really major. And the importance of listening to the people of the city, because they have... I mean, that is going to happen without the basic people. I was going to say, for example, in some of the comments made today, I often talk to people about how why San Jose is not... What was the city in the east where the racial problem was? I'm losing it. No, no, you mentioned...
Baltimore.
Ferguson. Yeah, I'm sorry. We're not Ferguson, because in 1970, in the early 1970s, a couple of black men and a couple of Latino men were killed by the San Jose PD. And the last one was Danny Trevino. And the Mexican community led by Jose Villa, the Mexican-American Community Services Agency, her father, they undertook a process of working with the police and the city and all the... Not just Latinos, with pulling everyone together, because the guns were in the... Out in the neighborhoods, they were, you know, wanting to go kill cops. That's very real. And that's why we're not Ferguson, because of what the people did. And those are the stories people don't know. That's the importance of a historical society. Lastly, I just wanted to mention, there's all kinds of stories. The Almaden Mines, they're... You know, Latinos don't rush to the Almaden Mines yet. We had a great... We did all the heaviest work there, but nobody goes there, and I don't think anybody's interested in us going, because they have to talk about how we were on the two-way system, did the dirtiest work for the least money, died the fastest. So those are the historical things we have to work on. And just saying again, that's got to be part of what happens here. Lastly, his book, when he came out, the first chapter starts talking about Lino Covarrubias, climbing on a roof of the CSO, 222 South Jackson. Lino's 94. He's there every day, right now. And anyway, it's the CSO in 1960 that fought across this state to make the state give old-age pensions to people who may not be citizens, but they have proof that they worked here for 20 years. And that's how they therefore started to afford buying the little houses, the real estate, blah, 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 that we talk about.
Thank you, sir.
The Raza has everything to do...
Thank you very much, sir. Welcome. After Mr. Geary, Jennifer Tran... I'm sorry, Jennifer Terai, Paul Soto, Salvador Bustamante, Gina Gates, Kathy Chavez-Napoli, and Shala Ballard.
All right, Robert Geary. I'm not going to thank the dais, which I normally do. I do want to thank the panel that we have here for the things they presented. The reason I feel this way is because I feel that this is a lesson that all of us should already know, that we should understand that the people sitting on the dais are the ones that should be thanking us for coming forth and bringing our testimony, our stories to you, breaking our hearts in front of you, and telling you the things that we're experiencing, the things that we're going through. And then to see votes come up against us is very heartbreaking. We're telling you the stories of our lives, we're telling you what's going on in our communities, we're telling you about the poverty and all the losses that people are experiencing, people being displaced, and yet this council still continues to vote to further displace people. And I don't normally point a finger at the council, and I don't really think I'm doing it right now. What I think I'm doing is trying to wake people up to understand that the people that sit up here are the people of this city, that you represent those people. that you represent those people of the city. And therefore, as representatives, you should listen to them. You should hear the stories that are being told. Take them to heart. Become part of the city, and not a part of the city, apart from the city, rather. And I would also like to say that besides racial disparity, we also have poverty disparity. And you all know that I stand for the people in the streets, the people in the streets that don't really have representation. We don't, we have councils for all sorts of things. We have different neighborhood associations. We have all these different things to bring information to the council of what's going on in our city. But what do we have that represents the people that are actually living in the streets of our city? What do we have that represents the things that we have to go through, the people that are displaced, the people that are being marginalized, criminalized, and disenfranchised? This is something that I have been trying to talk about for a long time, and I thank you for bringing this subject up. I thank you for doing the study. And I think we should do more than just say we're listening to people. I think we need to actually act on what people are saying. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
My name is Paul Soto, and please thank you. Thank you for elevating my life experience to the point where it is objective fact and no longer opinion. I cannot thank you enough for doing that for me. I was born at Valley Mid. My father grew up in South Cipues. He grew up in a tent and was picking fruit over there in that neighborhood. They called it South Cipues because it was muddy. Get out if you can. That was the premise. Yeah, you're nodding your head, Licardo, because you know these are objective facts no more. This is no longer, oh, well, your opinion, thank you for your opinion. I'll take that into consideration. Chale, no more. No, no, no. These are the facts that we are going to have to confront. So now, what I would like is for all of the policies that you guys agreed to with Google to be revised, and this stuff taken into consideration and inserted in those policies, so that we can have a better, more equitable, more, some equanimity going on. This poem right here is dedicated to Michael Tyree and Tabercio Vázquez, who was hung at St. James Park. He was not mentioned here. He was hung at St. James Park. He was a landed owner here, and he was hung over there in the 1800s, because he wouldn't leave. "Mental health under the weight of your wealth suffers striving for dignity. Are humanity under your apathy? Are significance beneath your indifference? Challenges our collective resiliency. Eyes listen, ears hear. Let sentient hearts pray. For those with an obsession who welcome oppression to those living in San Jose. The greedy know nothing with regard to justice. They know only about just us. 'Examine my heart, search my soul,' says San Jose. 'What has become of me when I look in the eyes ignoring the cries of those who are the least one of these? Compassion escorted me along the creeks. These share not in San Jose's wealth. Holding apathy's nose because it reeked, said, 'It's no matter. They brought it on themselves.' Along the Guadalupe, poverty mourning, as developers and banks keep oligarchs yearning, providing the means for gentrification, plotting the insolvent's decimation. Instead of new homes, they erect tombstones, casting its shadow along the river. Building your towers demonstrating your power in whose shadow the homeless shiver.' This poem's goal is to remind that we have a mandate to be kind, upon which our humanity is built. Woe to those in haughtiness they chose to suppress the soul pangs of guilt."
Thank you. Welcome, Shava.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Mayor Licardo, Salvador Bustamante with Latinos United for New America. First, I'd like to recognize the Latino members of the council for pushing this study session. Council members Esparsa, Jimenez, Peralles, Arenas, and Carrasco. And I also would like to thank the presenters for this great presentation. Thank you very much. It made me remind, remember about the reasons why we founded Luna. It was 2012, and we read the Latino report card, where it said that 50% of Latino kids in Silicon Valley do not graduate from high school, that Latinos are the people who work the most and earn the least, and that we had the highest incidence of diabetes. And so that's when we decided that we couldn't sit just and see all these things and do something to help alleviate that situation. That's the reason why we founded Luna. So we had been doing that since 2013, and, you know, we will continue to do that. But I think it is time for the council, as an institution, to also adopt a new system, you know, in how we share, I mean, distribute resources and services to our communities, so it's in a more equitable way. So the people who live in our communities that are underserved, that they receive their first share of these resources. We cannot, in good conscience, continue to, you know, just do nothing when this crime of having 50% of the largest ethnic group in the city not graduate from high school. That is a crime that affects all of us, not just those families and those kids, but it affects, you know, the ability of San Jose to continue to prepare its people so we can govern the city, so the economy keeps moving. Thank you very much. I challenge the, all the members of the council who haven't taken a position on this, to adopt a different system that is more equitable for everyone. Thank you.
Welcome, Jeanne Gates.
Good afternoon, council, and Mayor Licardo. Thank you for your attention. I wear many hats in the community. The primary hat is I am a community activist. I am a lover of San Jose. This is the place I was born. This is the place I will die. This is where I was educated. This is where my kids were mostly educated. I have no problems with my children's education. They are the exception, and I'm very proud of them. But it was not an easy road being Latino kids in a GATE program. They were not treated very nicely. As a matter of fact, it took some years until I found out that my daughter, though we qualified for free lunch, that she did not go and get her lunch card from her teacher, because she had to go to a school. It was Reed Elementary, predominantly white. And the teacher would say, "Come and get your card." So she didn't get her lunch card, because she was embarrassed. And those are the tiny little things that still go on in San Jose. Systematically, this is what happens. We now know that that's a horrible thing to do. We now know teachers should do better. And, but we also know sometimes some people don't do better. And if we reflect now and look at ourselves in the mirror, please ask yourselves, those of you who have not taken a position in supporting this initiative, why haven't you? Are you reflecting the community? Are you reflecting the language that is going on throughout the country? We're bigger than that. And this is a way for us to get smarter together. We all rise together. But remember, equal is not equal. The rungs that my kids had to climb are not the same rungs I had to climb, because they did not exist. For many families, there are no rungs at all. And we have to create them. And we have to do that within ourselves, within our own community, because we speak the same language. We have the same experiences. But remember, first of all, I love San Jose. I love all people in San Jose. We all need to do better. We need to support each other. Support this initiative, please.
Welcome, Ms. Chavez-Napoli.
Good afternoon. My name is Kathy Chavez-Napoli, and I am very proud to say that I am a native of San Jose, and I actually picked prunes when they were still here, cut apricots, picked strawberries, and picked walnuts. So I'm very proud to say that I'm a field worker of San Jose. But I do want to share some information with you. I haven't come here for a long time. I know Mr. Doyle remembers me when we were both much younger, and I have much more gray hair. But I haven't come because I was frustrated. I would come every week to city council meetings. I would look at the budgets, and I would talk to Mayor Hammer and Mayor McHenry about the inequities that were going on. And I would fight, and it would not make a difference. And I will give you one example of what I brought up. We all know about the Fallon House, and I just read about it recently. Now, I was at the meetings, and I read the newspaper that said it was going to cost $1 million to renovate. And years later, I got some other documents that said that $4 million had already been spent. But I was at a meeting, and I challenged Mayor Hammer, and I said, "I know you've spent more than $4 million, because you painted it and you landscaped it and you did a paving." And so in the end, she said I was wrong. But the Mercury News did an expose and said that over $6 million had been spent on a house for a mayor who was exploiting his wife and his community. I looked on the east side. We didn't have services. We didn't have a library. And more importantly, I am also Native American. So when I look at this city, I'm proud to say I'm a San Josean, but where is our Native American museum? We have a high-tech museum. Why don't we have a Native American museum? Because if you are from Mexico, or Central or South America, you're a Native American. Why don't we have that? We shouldn't have to be talking about a house that we can spend $6 million on, how long ago? Or the Fallon statue that we spent almost $1 million on, and it was hidden for how many years? Do you all remember that?
Thank you, ma'am.
So I'm asking for equity, not just...
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome. After Ms. Ballard is Father John Pettigo, Gil Villagán, Rita Duarte, Allison Brunner, and Liz Gonzalez.
Oh, this is on? Great. Good afternoon. My name is Shaila Ballard. I am a resident of San Jose. I come bearing gifts, and I bring these. They're two books that have been transformational for me, and I want to leave them with the council, because I would love for you all to read them. It was about three years ago or so that some incidents happened in my life that were catalyzed by the election of our current president that caused me to start doing some deep self-education and reflection on race in America. My own learning has been fairly painful to have some realizations about myself as a privileged white woman. I had longed for folks to process this stuff with, and I found these books incredibly helpful. And part of me saying this is because I want to first and foremost thank you all for having this conversation. I think it's incredibly important. I don't believe there's anything more important to be talking about and grappling with at this point in time. So these books, both of them, one of them is called "White Fragility: Why It's So Hard For White People To Talk About Racism." This is one that really, each of us sees ourselves in and helps affect the heart, which I think is really what needs to happen. And then "The New Jim Crow," which is more statistics and facts, which helps with the head. So I want to leave it, leave these with you. I had wanted to get a copy of "White Fragility" for all of you, and I went to one of the best bookstores in San Jose, Recycle Books, on the Alameda, and they were out. And they said that they are flying off the shelves. So please read this, and thank you again for doing this work.
Thank you. Welcome. Gil, if we can get you a mic, would it be easier for you to sit?
It's all right.
Okay.
I'm lame, but not that.
Okay.
You know, I was born in Mexico, but came up here when I was five years old, grew up in San Jose, lived on 7th Street in my uncle's garage for... Could somebody give me my water? The water that's right there? My throat, I take medication, but it makes my throat really dry. So let me take a quick...
Sure. Take a moment.
Thank you. So I, as a pre-teen, I picked crops around the San Jose Airport, all over the, they grew string beans. And in the mornings, five, six years old, I went with a neighbor and his family, and we picked string beans everywhere, from here to Moffett Field and all the roads that go to High Tech now. But I started around the airport. And in the mornings, the fields would be moist with, I thought it was dew, mountain dew or whatever. It turns out to be pesticides. And so my neurologist says the Parkinson's that I have might be due to a head injury or pesticides. Well, I rode a motorcycle for 20 years, never even owned a helmet, never had an accident, but a lot of pesticides that I might have ingested. So anyway, let me, I don't have a lot to say, but I'm going to quote from my favorite philosopher, Spanish philosopher, José Ortega Igazet, in a book he wrote in the 1950s, Meditation on Quixote. He said, "Humans have no nature, but as human beings, we have categorically different... We are categorically different than the other animals, which are born and live their whole lives according to their nature. Birds know how to fly. Fish got to swim. They know their behavior genetically and are, never doubt, what to do under any circumstance. But naturalists film baby birds first jumping from the nest, delighting us as they fall to the ground, but they spread their wings and they try and try again. But as human beings, we're not born with all the innate knowledge of how to navigate all the curves we encounter along our lives." Ortega's quote states that "we have history to guide us, to lead us, to tell us our history, if we know it, and if we lived it and remember it, tells us what we, how we got to where we are, and if we are able to reflect where we wish to go from here, how to get there, how to make our lives better in our future. Simply stated, if we know our history, we can strategize where to go from here." My other favorite Spanish philosopher, George Santayana, Spanish but graduated from Harvard...
Gil, I'm sorry. Can I ask you to make this one succinct?
Yes.
Thank you.
One more quote. He said, "Those who forget their history are doomed to relive it." That is why I'm excited about what we're doing here today. But we need to understand our history here in California. En el pasado fue México.
Thank you, Gil.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for bringing Stephen Petey. I read your book 10 years ago, and I loved it. And I'm going to give you...
Thank you, Gil. Thank you, sir. Welcome, Father.
Hi, Father John Pettigo, Catholic Charities. I want to thank the consultants for a great presentation, and thank you, Mayor Licardo, and the rest of the council for looking at this very important issue. In my work as Catholic charities and also as a priest, I've seen the effects of history in the present. And so I would want to kind of look at what's happening in the present and look at the racial connections between race and academic performance, academic gaps, wage gaps, housing, the plethora of housing problems in areas where there are concentrations of Latinos and many immigrant and refugee API folks. There are vast differences in the valley that we can, that map very clearly with social issues and social problems along with race. And so it's just really that the reality, and we can't say that this is not something, it's just in the past, but it's, my concern is the issues and how they affect the present and how we want to move forward in the present and looking at... and how we want to move forward in the present and looking at certain kind of policies that are going to not necessarily, not only drive and try to create compensation for the past, but allow us to move towards a future and a different kind of San Jose. As we look at other kinds of programs that we're coming up and developments in downtown, what is the impact on these communities of color? So I just urge you to take the time, really to look at this and to look at how these, not just historical realities and not just the social realities that are affecting our decisions, but also look at the simple, the data, because I think the data-driven conversations are also very important, and that they, that's real news, and I think that we need to kind of look at those pieces. I want to thank a lot of the Hispanic council members, the Latino Caucus, that has been pushing this and urging this to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Duarte.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Rita Duarte Herrera. I was born in San Jose in 1950, and I identify as a raised, poor, Chicana woman. I've lived here all my life. Currently, I am a happily retired resident of San Jose, but before retirement, I worked as a senior faculty member of NC, the National Coalition for Equity and Education, based at UC Santa Barbara. We use the term equity as a euphemism, because most people don't want to hear "eliminating racism, classism, sexism, homophobia, and other oppressions." Allow me to share just a few nuggets from this work. One, racism is both deeply personal and systemic, institutional. Racism hurts every one of us, not only those of us who are targeted by racism. Two, we have learned that the most effective strategies for reducing racism and other oppressions are collaborative and not confrontational. And three, any effective, life-changing class or training to eliminate oppressions must be deeply personal. Finally, equity is about building trust, building relationships, and creating a more respectful community. So I thank you, my city leaders, for moving towards building a more respectful community. And I thank you, our brilliant speakers, for the study session on creating a more effective community. San Jose. Stephen Pity, I must say, my husband, Dr. Joel Reese Herrera, quotes you practically every day. So how could I not be here?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Brunner.
Good afternoon. I'm Allison Brunner, and I'm the CEO at the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley. I am also a San Jose native. I am also a white woman, as you can see, who is privileged to grow up in the west side of San Jose, and so I'm a San Jose native, and I wanted to make that point, which I usually don't make when I come up here. I'm also someone, as you know, who's very committed to fighting for justice in our community and equality and eradicating racism. Today is a really good first step. Being responsive to communities that already exist here, those who have been disenfranchised historically, just as we're on this amazing, extraordinary precipice of change and unprecedented growth is critical and is also a great opportunity. You know, racial inequities, as has been talked about by our great speakers, exist across all indicators of success, including housing, health, and education, criminal justice and jobs, and many are the core areas that the Law Foundation specializes in. Local government is a critical player in both dismantling the structural causes of racial disparities in our communities and, of course, in improving the outcomes for low-income people and communities of color. Our city must take on this important challenge, committing to the challenge of ensuring equity as a core principle and being willing to implement policies and strategies to ensure that everyone in our city can reach their full potential. Our organization has been working with senior-level city staff involved with the Terrific Gare Program and Policy Link All In Cities programs, both of which take similar approaches to this type of education, personal work, and roadmap. We all know what we need to do, and I think you all now know what you need to do because we've all gone through this study session. We know, first and foremost, what Julie Nelson said, is that you and we all need to partner with your community. You need to listen to your community with all your heart and take their stories to heart. Many times, we come before you, and your constituents come before you and open their hearts to tell their stories, and this is the way that you can partner with them. Number two, here's the roadmap. It's up here on a PowerPoint, so let's do it. Number three, as Shiloh just said, do your personal work. It's important to this process. And as I said, as a native, I just encourage you to step up and help us step into our greatest potential. Help us, help us use our power, your power, and your platform to become...
Thank you. Liz Gonzalez, followed by Matt Gustafson, followed by Reverend Ray Montgomery, Camille Yanis Fontanilla, and Jean Dresden.
Hello, everyone. It's so wild to be sitting here during this conversation. Polite Me really wants to thank you, but hell no. Hell no, because violence got us here. Violence and bias and racism happens every single Tuesday in this room, so I cannot thank you for that. I'm grateful for the presenters and for what they shared here today, but their voice shouldn't hold more weight than our own, because those are our stories, our lived histories, and we know them. And when people come here to stand before you and you don't believe them, I will not thank you. Because today, we're not affecting somebody's pocket, there's only one police officer and this security guy. But how many are there when we're affecting Google's pockets, landlords' pockets? How many? It's unusual that you're allowing people to clap and cheer today. They're not getting thrown out. I've been thrown out of here many times for much less. I've been arrested here with seven other people for an unarrestable offense that was your call, La Cardo, your call. We have a long way to go here. And where are those young people that you threw out of here? Why aren't they invited into this conversation? Violence got here. Violence got us here. You can't tell us that we need to come here and be polite when we're experiencing violence every single day of our lives. Where's the example that you set? You just endorsed a millionaire. He's the reason why Stop and Frisk became a national practice. We see you. We know who you are.
Thank you. Welcome, Matt. Matt Gustafson? Nope, come on up then. Oh, great.
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Matt Gustafson. I live in Roosevelt Park, District 3. I'm also an urban planning student at San Jose State, and I work with Solos Mayfair. I first want to thank the presenters, Professor Pity, thank you. I've used your book in many of my papers already and this program, so I thank you for that. I just want to say I come to this subject understanding that I come from a place of tremendous privilege personally, and that I come with humility, understanding that I have way more to learn than I have to teach. But I think I owe it to myself and to my neighbors and my community to speak up in spaces like this, particularly is to speak against systems that benefit me at the cost of other people. So I just want to say that, in particular, I think we're having a conversation right now about housing and how we're doing housing. I appreciate all the history today that we learned about redlining and zoning and single-family housing. I think San Jose in particular has a lot to grapple with when it comes to these type of policies. I think other cities in America, Minneapolis, Portland, Oregon, Austin, Texas, Seattle, are finally coming to recognize that, yes, their single-family zoning and these redlining policies have created tremendous segregation in our cities. We see this in San Jose, too, and they're using those histories as justifications for changing the rules. And so I think with 94% of our housing being single-family zoning, if you look at the redlining maps from San Jose, the green and blue neighborhoods are the whitest neighborhoods. That's Willow Glen, that's Rose Garden, that's Alameda, that's Nagley Park. They're like 60, 70, 80, some 90% white neighborhoods, that's where resources are concentrated. I think we need to tear those things down. I think we need to really take a good look at changing those single-family neighborhoods, and we're talking about that this year in the General Plan Task Force review. I think we owe it to all of our community in San Jose, particularly communities that have been blocked out and oppressed in the past, to let people in and to take down those walls in those neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Camille.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Camille Yanis Fontanilla, and I'm the Executive Director of Solos Mayfair, as well as a lifelong resident of East San Jose. Today is a historic day because we can actually have this conversation in open, but it was extremely painful. And I think what we learned is that it is deep and pervasive, and inequity still persists today. I want to thank Dr. Stephen Pity for the historical grounding that we all need to know, and unfortunately, too many San Joseans don't know it. A lot of this information is hidden from us, and in my particular case, didn't learn it until I went off to college, which is a privilege in itself as someone who grew up in East San Jose. But I also want to remind you that while it may seem like this happened decades ago, this is still happening. You had residents here from the east side of San Jose last week in your chambers, or actually in the main tower, demanding for access to affordable housing and dignified housing. There were parents on the east side last night demanding at the school district for a more just and transparent governance structure where their voices are actually included. These things are persisting, and we are getting angry because it seems like nobody is listening. And so, I hope that we take today's study session and really ground ourselves in what we all heard as fact. This is systemic and structural racism and violence. This is intergenerational hate crimes, and money alone will not solve these problems. We can't fund things as our way out of it. It is going to require target process with the universalistic goals, I heard. And I think the one thing I also took away from this is that you have a community here that is willing to have this conversation, that wants to partner and work with you, and while it may be hard, I'm going to say it's not harder than being asked by every single city department on the east, in the east side of San Jose, to work with every department when we know that the root cause of all of these things are structural racism. And we always get to that point in every meeting, and then what we do is go back to the beginning of that structure, that framework, because we don't want to have the hard, difficult conversations. Nothing can be harder than doing this work, but if we continue to persist, we're going to see these things over and over again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmen and staff and this great panel, we thank you for this opportunity. My name is Reverend Ray. I'm the Executive Director for PAC, People Acting in Community Together. PAC's mission is to empower everyday people. We are a diverse, multi-faith community builders who challenge ourselves and all of those with power to catalyze a movement to end racial and economic inequalities in Silicon Valley. With a prophetic voice, the organizing people, we organize people to speak truth to power and justice, and we demand and create pathways to share prosperity and a society in which every person lives with dignity and respect. At PAC, our objective is to mobilize ordinary people. Mayor, we will bring these people to you so you can hear their stories. We hear the data, we know the statistics, but we must move beyond that. The difference between PAC and other organizations are, we're organizers, grassroots organizers, we're faith-based, interfaith, so we have a prophetic responsibility to speak truth to power. That simply means if we have to speak truth to power, there are things that don't exist that should exist. Now, your panel, you're in the most unenviable position. If you're a people of faith, just like the interfaith individuals that are part of our organization, you have a responsibility to the citizens of San Jose. I came here in 1989 as a young, 22-year-old college graduate, and I benefited from this city. But working in the community, volunteering in the community, I see the deficits, the marginalized, the individuals who can't speak for themselves, that will come to you. So from a prophetic perspective, representing the interfaith and the clergy of the city of San Jose, I pray for you, because you are in a very challenging position, but I applaud you for the opportunity of creating courageous space to have this conversation. But let's move beyond convening, and let's move towards coming up with solutions that create equality and equity for all of our people here in San Jose.
Thank you, Reverend. Welcome, Jean. After Jean is Rosa De Leon, and Daniel, I believe it's Montero, and Jaime Alvarado.
Good afternoon. I'm Jean Dresden. I'm with San Jose Parks Advocates, and I brought you the red line from 1937. The circled numbers with D's are the red ones, but the red is a very light pink. And in 1937, it was issued, you can go back and take a look at those historic redlined parks, and redlining continued through 1967, and you can see the park deficit neighborhoods as a result. There are scattered parks from prior to that that were built, but afterwards, new parks weren't built in redlined areas. And near the center of the city, on the southern end, is the neighborhood labeled D-11. That's the Gardner Neighborhood. And the year after the Southern Pacific alignment went through there, that line, the southern line of D-11, is the Southern Pacific boundary, with a little bit of land adjacent to the berm there. Cutting through a unified neighborhood created two neighborhoods, one of which deteriorated and became the famous Horseshoe Neighborhood as a result of creating that boundary, and the other one became North Willow Glen, a neighborhood that did well. So I urge you to consider, as you're thinking about transportation decisions and additional land acquisition decisions for parks, that you keep this in mind. In the last 20 years, there've been some efforts to acquire park land in the park deficit areas, but take a look at the quality of those parks. Some of them are tiny, remnant lands, no more than a totlot. Is that really addressing the historic inequities? And if we're going to do that, it's going to take brave council action. Thank you for your comment, your work on Tuesday, looking at regulations that have been barriers to those kinds of brave actions, and I hope we actually can make some of those changes to address that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Welcome. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. I want to thank the council for your time and for your attention to this important matter. I want to thank each of you for the important data. I learned so much about the history of San Jose. My name is Daniel Montero. I'm a son of San Jose. I was very grateful to have gone to Valley Christian High School, and if it wasn't for my father's hard work, that wouldn't have happened. And I clearly remember being in junior high and having my white buddies joke about me having to sleep in the bathtub because I lived in Evergreen. And it was a joke, and you know, I can laugh it off. But now, 25 years later, I see now as an adult the results of racism and injustice and so forth, and I believe in the good in our community, and I believe that by working together, we can position San Jose as a national leader. We are one of the most, 10 most effective cities in the country by, because of the growth that we're experiencing. And so by growing responsibly and with sustainability in mind, we can create the upward mobility for our citizens who haven't had that prior, and really create, in the long term, over time, a recession-proof economy because we're educating our community, we're creating jobs and more taxable revenue. So that being said, I just want to say thank you, and I'm grateful to be here.
Thank you very much, sir. Welcome. After Rosa, after Rosa De Leon is Jaime Alvarado and Teresa Alvarado.
Hi, Rosa De Leon with Californians for Justice. At Californians for Justice, we organize youth for racial justice in public schools, which this topic comes to be like super, super important, and it is crucial that we only not think about equity, but we act with equity when we take decisions. It is very, very sad that for generations, right, for our schools, the zip code of our students determine their success, and that is not fair, right? Especially for Black and Brown youth in... Especially for Black and Brown youth in our schools, who tend to be the most suspended, who tend to be the highest level of dropouts, who tend to graduate high school in a way lower level than anybody else. And we need our city, we need our school districts to take care of that. We have students that are coming into schools with so many things, carrying on the conditions of their communities, the lack of housing, right? Immigration raids in their communities, showing up to school, trying to learn without having to do that. And that is mainly our Black and Brown youth, right? I do want to share that something that we've seen, one of our biggest victories in CFJ with many allies, was reforming how schools distribute their funds by the local control funding formula. And what this does is give more money to the schools that need it the most, that happen to teach Black and Brown folks and low-income youth in our community. And we need to act with money, but also how are we bringing people who are directly affected into these conversations? We need to hear from them to be able to formulate solutions. And that is something that we need to do as a city, and we have not done well in a long time. We need to make sure that we hear from the communities that are directly impacted, not only folks that are investing into our community. Because our youth, our renters, right, contribute in a much powerful way. So we need to make sure that we do that, bring those folks into these conversations. And while we study what equity means and what this could look like in the future, right, really thinking about how can we act with equity? Because at the end of the day, we want to see results, especially for our Black and Brown community.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome, Jaime.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much. My name is Jaime Alvarado. Most of you probably know I'm a lifelong resident of East San Jose. I'm also a member of ARUVA, the Alamo Rock Urban Village Advocates, and I'll get more to that in a minute. I do want to say thank you to whoever was responsible for setting this study session today. And I certainly want to thank all of you for coming from out of town to share in this discussion. This is the best council meeting I've ever been to. So we've talked a lot about the different levels of racism. And I want to really point out the fact how structural racism is still strong here in San Jose today, right? And so the example I want to speak to is what was adopted by the city as the Alamo Rock Urban Village area plan, whatever. And that was a plan that really is an investment not in our community on the east side. It's an investment for a whole new community that's going to move into that area and in the end, displace countless residents, countless businesses. And it's going to change the historical character of our area, right? And so we come here, I think someone said it earlier, or Liz said it earlier, we come here, and so often, we're not listened to. And we tell you that the plan, the Alamo Rock Urban Village Plan as it is set right now will result in the displacement of the historical neighborhood of East San Jose. And that's coming, and it's coming fast. The other thing about that is the Alamo Rock Urban Village Plan was approved by the council only with token community input. And so we're working to see that change. The only way forward is with an equity approach. The equity approach is that these folks are talking about. And that's the approach that really invests in the historical, working-class immigrant families and businesses that are already in the neighborhood and frankly, are already being displaced. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Teresa. If anyone else would like to speak, please submit a card. Those are all the cards we have.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I really want to thank the city manager, as well as the full staff who worked on this, Suma and others, and the council for your time and attention to this important matter and for engaging the city in the GARE process. I really want to thank GARE and just remind you that this is about race and ethnicity, not just about race, which is important in our area, in our context. Because like my brother Jaime mentioned, I'm rooted from the East San Jose Latino context. Our city was founded through the Spanish and, of course, the Native American indigenous presence, but then the Spanish and the Mexican, and then the immigrant communities that came west for gold. So that is in the forefront of my mind, and it's something that I think we should always remember and pay homage to and recognize. I think what's interesting about the conversation around equity is it's difficult because we, as individuals, have every intention to be equitable, right? To live, treating people fairly. But these questions are less about shared understanding and our individual intention than around systemic change, the structural policies and practices and systems that have marginalized people and given others an unfair advantage. And so that's why it's an important conversation. It's something that SPUR is grappling, my organization is grappling with as well. How can we, given that planning affects every individual, how can we involve and listen in a really meaningful way to each individual in our community and ensure that we're shaping the future of our city so that each of them can be here, can thrive, can participate? So it's something that I'm committed to engaging with you all in. It's something that we're each going to have to grapple with for years as we're talking about shaping our community. And this isn't about having political camps. This is about coming together and doing the hard work together and listening to one another and respecting one another and shaping our city's future so that we all have a place here in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Good afternoon. I just wanted to speak very briefly. I know that time is of the essence right now. To thank, in particular, all of the city staff who've been involved in bringing this process forward, everyone who's been a part of GARE, didn't have to, I don't think, who's stepped up to do it. I've had several conversations that have been incredibly impactful for me as I do my work. I'm also, obviously, a white woman who made this pivot toward a deep commitment to eradicating racial injustice through my work at a community organization locally. I'm also in deep conversation with a number of other community leaders, colleagues, who I consider to be close, close friends, one of whom is Chris Wilder, the VMC Foundation. With his permission, I want to quote him. He says, you know, "Once you've seen this, you cannot unsee it." So we've all seen this together tonight, today. We can't unsee it. So I just want to ask all of you, especially those of you up on the dais, if you would be willing to commit a public declaration, which was step one in the framework that we look to today, to committing to do this work, or this study session is really for naught. I love the reference to the slow-cooking beans. So all of us are here from the community in support of your work, and we're ready to stand with you as you make that public declaration. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Thank you. And thanks to all the members of the community who came out to speak. Obviously, this is the beginning of a conversation. I know many have been involved in a conversation for some time, but beginning of us making this, I think, in a very formal, public way. And we've got much more conversation to have. I want to do a check-in here with my colleagues and everyone. It's now a little past 4:30, which is the time we had for the hearing. I'm happy to extend this so we can have some conversation. I also know folks have community commitments to run off to. So to check in, is 5 o'clock okay? Is later okay? I'm seeing some anxiety. Is 5 o'clock?
Mayor, I apologize. I cannot stay. I had another engagement on another side of town that I must go to.
Folks are getting pulled, I know, to different parts of the community. All right, so 5 o'clock? Okay, let's go then. Very big thank you again, certainly to all the members of the community who've been involved in various ways in this conversation and for coming out today, as well as Leon and Julie and Stephen, and to our city staff, and we're working very hard on this, Suma Maciel, Angel Rios, and Lee Wilcox, and Dave Sykes, who I know is also very committed to this as well. I do want to correct one that's apprehensive attention. I think we are all quite willing to engage in this, and we're all quite willing to make a public declaration. I don't want to speak for anybody, but that's certainly what I've heard. And so I don't want anyone walking away believing that there's opposition to engaging. I know we're going to have another study session, and I know that there is a lot of conversation still to have and a lot of work, most importantly, to be done. But I think it's important that we at least frame it in that way. I know, Julie, you had some questions for us. And I'm happy to start with those questions or different ones, if you'd like to frame it up for us.
Actually, instead of my questions, I would love to hear if you all have questions.
Okay. All right. Dave, you just hit the button. Did you want to speak on this? Someone did. Okay. There was a, all right. I'm taking you off, I'm taking you off the screen.
That was mine, ma'am.
Yes. Okay. Oh, yes, you're suddenly Dave Sykes today.
Yeah, I did as well. I've had mine on.
Is that right? All right, Councilmember Sparza.
Thank you. I also would like to thank the hard work from the folks in the city manager's office. I know that we chose in our budget process not to sort of allocate extra resources to this work. And so you are all doing tremendous work and have joyfully actually taken this on, and it's much appreciated. And I'd like to thank Dr. Pity, and thank you for coming out today, and our presenters from the National League of Cities and Race Forward. Dr. Pity, thank you for condensing 200 years of San Jose-specific history in 20 minutes. I wish that we had had more time for that. And in the presentations, to use some of the local examples that, for example, our housing department has used and other departments have been able to use redlining maps and things like that. And that's very instructive because we're in here every week making decisions about land use, transportation, programs, all the things that we do. And that kind of history and background, to me, has a direct impact on everything that we do. And so I actually wanted to say something that, for me, I think I'm very appreciative of getting to this point after kind of a brutal debate back in May. I don't think equity is solved by an after-school program, right? And that's what I loved about your presentation, that showed that we need infrastructure investments and a systems-based approach. Just yesterday, we had a committee where our Parks and Rec Department presented a map. And a map that showed where the community centers were in our city and where the folks with the lowest income were in our city. And it was kind of funny to all the folks in the room because that map, even though it was based on income, right? That map and the red zone in it is the red zone, you could overlay redlining. It's the same thing, right? And so that's why I appreciated the history because that's exactly how we got to where we are today. And I wanted to give another example about infrastructure. I'm a former community development block grant commission. Not very sexy, I know. But it's where we take federal money and put 85% of it into capital investments. And I was on that 20 years ago. And 20 years ago, we made a choice as a city to put a lot of that money into things like streetlights and sidewalks because big swaths of our city didn't have those things. So for me, equity doesn't just mean a sidewalk. It means that we have a full infrastructure system. And so I just wanted to point that out, that we're not even, and that we, as a city, made that choice a long time ago to take CDBG funds and just pour them into very unsexy things like sidewalks and streetlights. Because we don't, and we still today don't have. The last unpaved road in the city was District 7. And so I appreciate that today is a first step. And I look forward to scheduling the date for the second study session so that we can get a little bit deeper into the how. Because every choice that we make here every Tuesday is related to equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pross.
Thank you. And I want to echo those comments and really a lot of comments from our community members. As we were listening to the presentations from all three of you, I felt as well that this was the best, the most productive council session I have been a part of. And I felt a sense of relief that we are finally having this conversation in the open and specifically on this dais. And so I want to thank you as well, from my heart to all three of you, for helping us as a community. And I want to thank everybody in the audience, our community, for being here with us to engage as you have been for years, decades. And I think, you know, I think it was Jaime Alvarado that had stated as well that this was one of the best council meetings he's been to. And even though I've been coming almost every Tuesday for the last five years, he may still have more under his belt than I do from the decades of being here. And so I really do appreciate the partnership and the support to get us to where we're at today. I do look forward as well to the continued conversation. I wanted to ask the city manager, because I know that we've alluded to it a little bit in regards to the next steps, because we are pushing a time limit as we've stated today till 5. But city manager, if you can describe the next steps for us in regards to continuing not only the dialogue, but then more importantly, getting to some of the actual work.
Yeah, thank you, council member. So I think we're targeting the next study session to really focus on the how, as some of us have talked about, so I won't go over that part of it again. I think specifically, we're looking at early February. I think the date we've targeted right now is February 10th.
It's February 13th.
February 13th. So, and as our process is, we would come forward with a proposed agenda for that through the rules process. Obviously, we typically do quite a bit of engagement to kind of build that agenda that hopefully achieves the objectives that we're looking for in that next study session. So that would be the next major step for us in terms of continuing this conversation.
And is it safe to say we don't expect Leon or Julie to be present in that study session?
I don't even think we've necessarily extended an invitation. But, you know, I think we have a lot of work to do in terms of kind of figuring out what that agenda looks like. But certainly, if Lee or Angel, Suma wants to add any perspective.
Just right before the study session, we actually made the honorary San Joseans.
We even got two T-shirts.
So that was the hook. That was, we'll actually discuss that. You know, Julie and Leon have been, you know, key resources that we've been using because we're really, our intent is really to make sure that we take this and not just talk about it, but really transfer this into, how do we address this issue in a way that makes for good public administration and for ultimately bettering our neighborhoods and our city? So I would imagine that we'll continue our work with them. We still got to kind of talk through the details, but we can follow up on that.
Thank you. I ask specifically because we are looking at around 16 minutes remaining. And their institutional experience and knowledge, for me, could be really key. So I did have, you know, some engagement that I wanted to do. So I'll try to narrow down and focus a couple of questions. I think that, you know, I could probably talk for quite some time myself as well on some of the challenges that we still face today here, not just with the institutional inequities and racism, policies from the past, but policies that exist today, as you have pointed out. And not necessarily, you know, explicit ones, as was described by Julie, but implicit policies and decisions that put us into the situations that we are at today. So I am curious, and it could be Director for Julie or Leon yourself, what do you feel our next step or the next priority for this council should be?
I think that you have a huge amount of expertise. Like, it's our job to work with government, so we love working with you. But I would just lift up the expertise that you have locally, the community. Like, it was just so moving to hear the testimony and the passion that people brought. And passion and expertise. And I would secondly say that from a...
And I would secondly say that from a staff perspective, you've got some amazing staff people who have just been really doing intense, meaningful work over the past couple of years. And so I think more than listening to us, it would be great for you to listen to them. I think the sort of high-level strategy, it's great for you to do some sort of resolution or legislation to affirm the importance of working on racial equity. So I know that was mentioned, would be supportive of that, but you need to get more granular, that every single department in the city of San Jose has the ability to influence racial equity or inequity. And so thinking about like your routine decision-making processes, are you having discussion and doing analysis around what the impacts are? And so ultimately, in addition to doing a statement, I would really encourage you to think about across departments, how are you analyzing the inequities that exist and developing strategies that are within the sphere of control of local government? That it's not about someone else doing something, it's about your own sphere of control.
Yeah, and I would just echo and dito what Julie said. In addition to that, I think the, while I think the exchange that we have here in the dais is good for public dialogue, also want to make sure we're creating space for you to be able to ask questions that, where we could be helpful in kind of helping you strategize and think about the role of council. And I think I really want to emphasize that the success of this work is not only the infrastructure you're building internally, but the commitment that you're making to the community, and what does that connection, what does that in a formalized way look like? So the message is being sent that we're not just doing this behind closed doors, we're committed to the structural change that needs, that you're getting feedback from the community in that space.
Thank you. A follow-up question. You described the city of Louisville as hiring, their mayor hiring a chief equity officer. This was through some of the work that you had done with them. The mayor of Austin forming an office of equity. I had listed off for this council and my colleagues a number of examples as we were discussing this initially through our budget discussions earlier this year. Do you feel that that level of investment is an important next step? And at what point in this, in the process would be the right time for us to be discussing that level of investment?
I would say that actually, timing is good, that sometimes it's a question that we get asked frequently, like, what's the ideal size of an office or number of staff? And the truth is that there's not sort of perfect answers. What we do find challenging sometimes is if a sort of city or county is just getting started and it's like, oh, we're going to add an office, but they haven't like actually built the infrastructure across. So it's just like, then you plop down an equity officer or an office, and they aren't really connected to the rest of what's happening in the city. And so I just think that, to the extent that you all have done some of that capacity building, and you've got some really sharp people who are already working on it, I think the dedication of resources is actually really important and really critical.
Yeah, so it's not about checking the box to say you have an office of equity, or checking the box to say you've created a chief equity officer. It is about what the, what the investment you're making with that infrastructure. And as you're going down the road, one of the resources that could be useful, and just a shout-out to Gare and PolicyLink, they have organized, so there are roughly about 35 cities that have chief equity officer structures out there, and then there's a cohort that Gare and PolicyLink launched in San Antonio to NLC's conference at City Summit that brought together 12 of those chief equity officers from around the country. And we had a chance to bring those chief equity officers with our real council, NLC's real council. And there's a great network of learning there, so as you're trying to figure out what model you're looking for, want to make sure you're getting plugged in to that, that could be a helpful resource as you're thinking about what could be useful for San Jose.
I have another important question, so I recognize that the time check, I want to be respectful of my colleagues.
We have three colleagues who'd like to speak.
Thank you for letting me on. I was actually going to ask to see how many people were still waiting. So I think this question is now more for our City Manager, because this kind of boils down to some of the contention that we had earlier this year, which is dedicating some resources to actually beginning this work. What we have done to date is tasked a few staff members who have then tapped a couple of other staff members to initiate and lead on the work that we've done to date. Like putting together the study session, I want to say thank you to Dave, but your team, Lee and Angel, for helping in making, and Zuma, excuse me, for helping to create and make this happen. So to your, this similar question here, what more level of investment do we need? We didn't make that investment through the budget to actually do it, we just tasked staff to do it, which, as we know, there's a number of important things that we've also tasked staff to do. Is that something that you're going to be, you know, requesting through this next budget cycle to actually put some investment into it, which may not initially be, as we've just heard, the next step may not be creating a deputy or creating an office, but it will absolutely need capacity building, and we will need somebody to do that, where we need, we will need that support for that individual or those individuals. And so what does that look like for yourself, Dave?
Yeah, I'm not sure yet. You know, I think, you know, for me, there's been two pieces to this. And so as I described in my opening comments, where staff got involved with this was very much around capacity building. And I've been in this organization for a long time, and I know what it takes to kind of move through something where we're trying to build the capacity. And so it does take time, and I think the way we've gone about it has been appropriate for us, to be honest. I think now we're engaged in a significant policy discussion. And to be honest, where that leads us, I don't know. And what type of resources we need to achieve those objectives, I don't know. You know, I think the root of your question is around the capacity building. I think that's something that we can talk about through this budget process. I do think that what we've been through so far over the past two years has been appropriate. And it's been challenging for us, to be honest. We started two cohorts, one two years ago, one just this last year. I will tell you, it's not all easy-peasy. I will tell you that there's a lot of dynamics involved with it, and we've been working through that. And I will tell you, it is actually the Gare teams that have told me, don't go so fast. And so I've been very respectful of that. I trust them a lot about what they're telling me, because this work takes time. But that's the capacity building within the organization. The policy work, obviously, I don't get to dictate that, you all do, and we will, as always, respond to that.
Thank you.
And on the policy front, just to add, I believe from conversations with Lee that part of what we'll be talking about in the next session will be around the equity screen that would be implemented with the budget and in different areas, and talking about how that can be meaningful, at least to address resource allocation issues. Obviously, that's by far not the whole of the work, but that will be coming. Anything further? Councilmember Rans?
Thank you. So, of course, echo all the acknowledgements that my colleagues have already stated, and because we only have a couple of minutes, I'm going to also thank the public, because I know it's a timeout of your day, and so you stayed here with us, and thank you for sharing all your thoughts. One of the concerns that I have, and I'm glad that we looked at the past, grounds us and helps guide us in terms of where we're going to go in the future, so that's really important. I feel like we are going too fast on that note, Dave. I know that you said that you're being told that, you know, not to go too fast. I don't know that we have a shared understanding in terms of what equity really is. I don't know that we've had that discussion amongst each other. And I think the last time we talked about equity, there was visceral reactions. And it was, I'm going to put it, you know, on the table, it seemed like those of us who asked for it were maybe being the culprits of something that we shouldn't ask for. And possibly, I know that I've been called divisive because of some of the work that we've brought up. I don't know that anybody who didn't request it is a culprit of racism, is a racist, absolutely not. And I think we need to clear that up, and clear up that just because we, you know, I as a person who was on the Brown Act requested it, doesn't mean that I'm accusing anybody else of not, of being a racist or not being invested in this process, because obviously we're all here because we want to improve our city, we want to make sure we represent our communities well. And I don't know that we've brought in our community into this conversation, because one thing is for us to have a collective definition of what this means, and another thing is to bring in our community in. I don't know that we should talk about the how just yet. I think we should still talk about the what, and just put it all on the table. I think it's, when you're ill, you don't just, you know, get the results from the doctor and you say, well, you know, hopefully it'll get better. It's the same thing. We know that there's systems that have been failures in the past, you've talked about it, Stephen. So we know that there's been failures in the system. We can't just continue on and ask about the how until we really dig in a little deeper. So that's my concern. And I ask for my colleagues to think about, and Dave, for you to help guide us in, how do we engage our whole community into having this kind of conversation collectively? It's going to be difficult, it's going to be awkward, but that's okay, because that's progress. We'll be a much better city because of it, and I think our residents will be heard. I am concerned that we don't, we won't have an outside consultant coming in, because our staff can be prone to some pressures. There's a hierarchy here, and I want to make sure that they're not prone to any pressures. I want to make sure that we bring in an outside consultant so that they can guide us in a very neutral way. I don't doubt that there's a lot of wealth of information and a lot of skill sets among our staff, but there's a, you know, there's hierarchy here. And I want to recognize and I want to acknowledge it, I don't want it to be part of a problem in the future. So those are my comments. And lastly, I want to just agree with you, Councilmember Sparza, programs are not the solution to all of this. I think it takes a real, a lot of work to take a look at our systems and how our systems are failing, our community and our youth and our people of color. And that takes a lot of work. And so it's not, because one, we're saying our youth are the problem, so if we just help mend them, everything will be better. But I think it's about looking at the systems. If we happen to have some, some of the product being some of the programs that help assist some of that and resolve it, then that's great. But I think if we don't do a systems evaluation, then we won't get very far, and we'll just be spinning our wheels. So I look forward to the next steps. I hope that we can go slow and include our community, because I think for me, that's the most important part.
I know this issue's come up a few times, and I just want to acknowledge that I think everyone is right here, that we've got structural racism in the city, we have institutional racism in the city, there's systemic work we have to do. But I think we also have to look at allocation of resources, because I can tell you, the very first thing I hear when I'm in a community, and I'm talking to a mom who's got two kids, is, why is it we don't have after-school programs in my community center like they have in Willow Glen, just to throw out an example? Or, why is it we don't have police patrols? And I can tell you, that is what our community does care about in addition to other things, in addition to the systemic work. And I think the systemic work is going to take a lot of time, as has been suggested. It is hard work, it's important work, but I think we have to be able to do both. And that's why I think we should not hold back from doing what the council's authorized, which is to use an equity screen to actually look at our budgetary allocations, so we can be as transparent as possible and as thoughtful as possible about allocating those resources. When we had this discussion around the budget, in fact, it was the allocation of resources around traffic calming that was in fact raised by one of our colleagues as evidence of a lack of equity. And so I think we have to do all the above, and it's important for us to pay attention to all the above. And budget is around the corner, and so this is an issue I think we just have to confront too. So I just wanted to say that, to get it out there, that two things can be true, and that we have to do all of it. Councilmember Foley?
Thank you, I'll be brief. I acknowledge that I am a white woman of privilege, having a discussion about equity, and that the lens at which I look at things may be different from the majority of you in the audience, but it doesn't mean that I don't hear what you have to say, and I don't, and that I didn't hear the report that was presented to us today. I thank you for your report, I appreciate Shila Ballard for suggesting the reading material. I also appreciate that this is, that the comment was made, that we, when we talk about equity, we lead with race, but there are other things for us to discuss down the line, including sexism, ageism, heterosexism, and people with disabilities, and how we create a level of equity for them as well. So I just wanted to, as one of the, as a white woman of privilege, to make a comment that I hear what you have to say, it doesn't mean that I am not listening.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraska?
Thank you, thank you so much. First of all, I wanted to thank you, I wanted to thank the presenters for being here. I represent District 5, which is the east side of 101, and 99% of what you spoke of is the district that I represent. All of the redlining and much of the history and research is exactly the district that I represent, that I'm very honored to represent. And there was a speaker, actually, that spoke also of a little piece of Willow Glen called Horseshoe, which is actually where I spent my infancy in, which I'm a very proud product of, because my parents worked in the Canaries. So I grew up in Horseshoe and have absolutely wonderful memories of it, because that's where my parents settled in, and it formed me. And so, product of both west side and east side immigrant communities. I also want to thank the community members for being here. I have to say just a couple of things before we close off this session. This, again, was one of the most informative council sessions in a very different way. I haven't felt this kind of pain in a very long time. My study was in Chicano Studies at UC Santa Barbara. I went in as a psychology major and then quickly realized that I was very disconnected from my studies, once I started taking sociology and Chicano Studies, and then realized that my passion was in Chicano Studies because I had been denied my history for such a long time. And then I met a gentleman there, and we started rallying against immigration advocacy and rights, and he later became Senator Kevin DeLeon. And we cut our teeth in immigration issues. I bring that up because it formed us, and it rooted us. And I wasn't supposed to be here, I was a social worker for 25 years. And as you were speaking about the history of San Jose, it just, it just reminded me why I jumped into social work, and why I jumped into Chicano Studies, and all the advocacy that I've done, and why we have been dubbed as the Latino Caucus, and why the Latino Caucus here has been really pushing on the notion of equity for the city of San Jose, and focusing on those under-invested communities. And this has been a very painful conversation, whether folks agree with it or not, or whether we have a different interpretation of it, or whether we're just trying to get on the same page in terms of the concepts. But it was painful. One, because two of my children, who I think are falling asleep there, and they're not paying attention to me right now as their mother speaks. I'm very eloquent, I promise. Raise your hands. So two of my kids are there, I'm a mother of four, but I think of, everything that I do and I think of, they are my North Star, my four children. My mother, whom I just buried, talked about this history. My mother whom I just buried, talked about this history. And, and now my community who comes to me with these stories are, I feel them and I live them. And just yesterday, a gentleman came knocking on my door. And so they are my neighbors, I live with them, and I experience it. And one of the criteria for my team members to be part of my team is that they have to love the east side as much as I love the east side. So I know that this is just the beginning of a very long conversation that we will continue to have, but I will just say this, that as we continue to have the conversation of equity, I am home to the greatest number of gang hotspots. District Five is home to the greatest number of sexual assaults, especially to children under the age of 14, and in particular to those under the age of eight. We have the most DV cases, and just last night at 2:00 in the morning, we had another homicide on Florence. We've had a historic under-investment in our community. We have supposedly the same number of residents as the other nine districts, but I beg to differ, because we rent the hallways, the garages, we rent our sofas in the living rooms, and we double up, we triple up, and you know the story of that. It's not just about leveling the playing field, it's about making sure that my children are safe and that they have an opportunity to succeed in one of the wealthiest cities in the world. And making sure that Camille's son and that unborn child has a, has a fair shake, and Tamara's children, but my neighbor's kids, and everyone else that is really depending on me to make a difference. It's, it's really significant, because if east side gets left behind, those on the west side, on the south side, in Rose Garden, in Almaden Valley, don't really understand the impact that that's gonna have on them. So with that, I want to thank you all again. I believe, I truly believe that the well-being and the safety and the success of San Jose depends on the success of the east side.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparsa?
Thank you. And I, I won't take up too much time, I have some questions about process. The city manager talked about speed and, and being asked to go slow. My neighborhoods can't wait. And so I think there are some neighborhoods in the city that can't afford to go slow. And I also wanted to address the resources to do this work moving forward. We're the leanest staff, big city in the country, it's a statistic we often use in describing the capacity of what we can and cannot This work should be properly resourced, and we can hopefully find that there are nonprofits and organizations, foundations, who are funding this work. If we can't find the way to scrape up some money within our own budget, we need to find it. I don't, I wanted to echo Councilmember Adenas's comments. You have only people of color in your office, Owen Lee, working on this right now. So I also want to be mindful of the fact that we, of what we are asking our own staff to do, and who participates in those discussions, and who's leading that, and who we're putting the onus of that on. And I also agree with Councilmember Adenas's comments earlier, I wasn't gonna say this, but you said it, so I'm just gonna say it, which is, you know, you asked us in your presentation earlier today for our comments and some questions. We were told not to speak today, that there would be no time for us to speak, that this would not be a give-and-take presentation. I don't know if all 12 of us, or if only the five of us were told that, but that, that makes me concerned.
Councilmember Sparsa, could you tell us who told you that? Because obviously, that's a very important assertion. Who told you?
So I was told as part of this briefing to not expect to have any conversations or discussions or questions. So, so I want to get to my point.
Yeah, but you're making assertions.
No, no, I'm, I have the, I have the floor, I have the floor, right? So, so I think that we need, we do need a partner in this work, because there is a hierarchy involved, right? And I think we need an outside partner to step in and create, one, the space with expertise and resources, and frankly, a space that we can be confident in to move forward and speak and say our piece. And so I just, I, I'm just concerned that we're having a couple of meetings, and I know, I know that some, some folks are doing a lot of really hard work, I'm not here to minimize that, but I also don't want to slow down our work on equity and the need that if we need help, we should just ask for it, we should get help. I think there's help there, and we need to be open to doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for participating, we're gonna continue this conversation. And again, thank you for taking the time to join us. Meeting is adjourned.